Good evening, I'm Carolyn Rye, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM on this 15th day of December 2020. Pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's Executive Orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended by the Virginia General Assembly, and the School Board's April 7, 2020 Emergency Resolution, the School Board and selected staff members will meet in person at the School Administration Building. However, at this time, it is impractical and unsafe to allow other persons to attend the School Board meeting due to physical distancing and safety precautions related to the pandemic. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. Madam Clerk, would you kindly take role and announce those present both here physically and via Zoom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board chambers are Chairwoman Rye, Mrs. Anderson, Mr. Edwards, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Felton, and Ms. Owens, and currently present on Zoom is Ms. Weems, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Hughes.
Thank you, and members have asked me to add, Vice Chair Mrs. Melnick is not attending this evening due to the death of her father, and our sympathies are with her and the Melnick family. Mrs. Manning will be participating via Zoom from 6 to 7 o'clock, and then, due to a family obligation, will be signing off. Mrs. Riggs, Zoom participation due to a health, personal health matter. Mrs. Weems, due to a family situation. And Mrs. Hughes, also a health matter. Okay, with that, I ask that you all join us in a moment of silence. And please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Lord, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now are at the recognition portion of our agenda. The task of coming up with words to describe Dan Edwards' contribution to this city and this board makes us a little nervous. After all, the words we choose are going to be remembered when the individual we were referring to has been so impactful on the lives of others. Besides all of that, the idea of trying to sum up someone's public career in a few words is in itself daunting. Mr. Edwards, you have truly passed on to the rest of this board a great lesson, that devotion to community and understanding their needs and what it keeps us all moving forward. Your tenure on this board has had an immeasurable effect on the success of this division. The division is what it is today because of your service, dedication, and commitment. In appreciation of your 22 years of service to this board and our community, I am pleased to ask that you allow members of that community to acknowledge that impact publicly tonight. And we will start with the Honorable Robert Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach. Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Hello, everybody. Let me just say, as a point of personal...
Oh, the microphone, I'm sorry.
You got it?
Yours. Okay.
Oh, that's different than us. Okay, but thank you. As a point of privilege, I like to say that I've known Dan for a couple decades now, almost as long as he's been on the board. He's been a neighbor, a friend, and a colleague. And I often say the strength of Virginia Beach, especially during challenging and turbulent times, are the people of Virginia Beach. Dan, you are one of the many bright lights in Virginia Beach that have made Virginia Beach such a great city, and thank you for your dedication. We have a reputation of being the safest city and one of the best education cities in this great nation, and everyone has participated in this, and we are grateful. But Dan, for your long tenure and service, I personally say thank you and look forward to continued friendship. I do have a proclamation on behalf of our City Council. Whereas Daniel D. Edwards holds a Bachelor of Science in Education from Northwestern University, and a Master's Degree in Business Administration from the College of William &amp; Mary. Whereas Dan had a 25-year career in the United States Navy, where he served as a surface line officer. He was also a Carrier Department Head, and on shore, his specialty was working in the Fleet Budget Office and the Chief Financial Officer for the Base Commander. Whereas since retiring from the Navy, Dan has owned and operated a small business with 14 employees. Whereas Dan was elected to the Virginia Beach School Board in 1998, and re-elected in 2000, 2004, 2008, 2012, and 2016, serving as Chairman from 1999 to 2016, and as a School Board Vice Chair from 2017 to 2018. Whereas during his time on the School Board, Dan was instrumental in the fulfillment of several initiatives and projects, including leading the development of the citywide academy program in many of our high schools and some lower schools, the strategic planning process, engaging all stakeholders to develop inclusive compass to 2015, 2020, and now 2025, the renovation or rebuilding of 30 schools while maintaining and upgrading all other schools to 21st century standards, and establishing the Building Utilization Committee and process to ensure efficient use of school funding, closing or consolidating two schools, and eliminating 340 portable classrooms, the equivalent of eight elementary schools. Whereas Dan has also been very active in our community, serving on the Board of Directors as Treasurer and Scholarship Chair for the Tidewater Striders Running Club. He also serves as a Board Member and Treasurer for the Virginia Beach Crime Solvers, and for the National Crime Stopper USA Board, and on its Board of the Tidewater College Access Foundership, Parks and Recreation Foundation, Mount Trashmore YMCA, and the Virginia Beach Sports Club, and the Virginia Beach Education Foundation. Lot of stuff, good stuff. Whereas Dan and his wife Sue raised two children in Virginia Beach who graduated from city public schools, Dan is proud to have been a continuous member of the PTA for 25 years. And whereas by exemplifying the model of stewardship and ardent commitment to quality education, Dan has enriched the lives of 10,000s of residents. Therefore, I, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, do hereby recognize December 15, 2020, Dan Edwards' Day. Once again, thank you so much, Dan. Thank you, Bobby, appreciate it. Beyond well deserved. Thank you all, and God bless you all for the work that you do for our great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now it's my honor to introduce Mr. Dale Ward, Vice President of the Boy Scouts of America Tidewater Council, and Zachary Grinvolsky, Eagle Scout. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a great privilege to be here to honor one of our favorite people, Dan Edwards. As you may know, Dan has been a longtime member of the Tidewater Council Executive Board, and Zach here has something that he'd like to present.
Hello, Mr. Edwards. For you, I have a proclamation honoring your achievements and contributions. Whereas Dan Edwards is ending his many years as Chairman of the Virginia Beach School Board, and whereas his leadership, vision, and professionalism have been a true example to all, and whereas his development and implementation of innovative best practices have transformed the School Board's operations as a model for other cities to follow, and whereas his service to the Virginia Beach community at large has been an example and inspiration for others to choose selfless community service, and whereas his many years of contributions as a scouting volunteer and member of the Tidewater Council Executive Board continue to guide the selection of the best leaders to meet the critical needs of the council, and whereas his dedicated leadership as a friend of scouting has set the example for other volunteers to follow, and whereas his personal qualities as a mentor, teacher, collaborator, friend, and trusted colleague are emblematic of the guiding principles of the Scout Oath and Scout Law. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the Tidewater Council Boy Scouts of America Executive Board hereby designates December 15, 2020, as Dan Edwards' Day, to be celebrated throughout the entire membership of Tidewater Council. Chuck Kubick, Council President, Tidewater Council, BSA. Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you.
We now have some special acknowledgements, and we welcome Mr. John Sutton to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Edwards, I'm honored to be able to present this on behalf of Congresswoman Elaine Loria and Governor Ralph Northam. Commonwealth Virginia, Office of the Governor, dear Dan, I write to thank you for your many years of service to the public schools of Virginia Beach. During your 22 years on the School Board, 18 of those as Board Chairman, and 25 years as a PTA member, you have been instrumental in leading Virginia Beach City Public Schools for moving forward. Your commitment to your community is also evident in your leadership with the Tidewater Striders Running Club, the College Access Foundation, the Boy Scouts, and many others. It is people like you who make our communities better places to live. You leave behind a tremendous legacy that will surely have a lasting impact. On behalf of all Virginians, I thank you for those countless contributions, for serving with grace, grit, and distinction, and for your commitment to Virginia Beach schools and its students. I wish you all the best in the years ahead. Sincerely, he signed it sincerely Ralph, so that's a good thing. And he wrote a personal note that I will make sure that you get as well. Representative Elaine Loria, Member of Congress, dear Mr. Edwards, congratulations on your service to the Virginia Beach City Public School Board. Your many years of service to our community is greatly appreciated. I understand that you are departing the Board after 22 years of service. Thank you for leading the school district in the strategic planning process, as well as the development of the citywide academy programs in many of our schools. Your service in various leadership positions, such as Board Member and Officer of the Virginia Beach Rotary Club, Crime Solvers, Parks and Recreation Foundation, the Mount Trashmore YMCA, the Virginia Beach Sports Club, and the Norfolk Regional Sports Club, the College Access Foundation, Tidewater Council, Boy Scouts of America, and Virginia Symphony, is commendable. Your dedication to improving our community and the quality of our public education through engaged civic leadership is highly appreciated. It is my honor and privilege to recognize you for this achievement. Again, congratulations. It also accompanies a written note from her as well. Mr. Edwards, the Congresswoman also wanted me to make you aware that in honor of your 22 years of service to the City of Virginia Beach, she has asked that a flag be flown over the Capitol of the United States and presented to you. That flag was flown this week. She has indicated to me, and as soon as we have it, I will make sure that you'll get it. That flag is flown in your honor, sir. Thank you.
It's now my pleasure to introduce Mr. Bill Bronkey, former member and former Vice Chair of this Virginia Beach School Board. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Chairman Rye, members of the Board, thank you. It's my pleasure to be here today, and thank you for the opportunity to share a few thoughts. And I did a lot of reminiscing over the past two weeks. Is that my time? You know, I started thinking about this in 1998. Newsflash was that AOL buys Netscape, and Dan Edwards was also elected to the Virginia Beach School Board. I'm really not sure what happened to AOL or what Netscape even is, but Mr. Edwards, he went on to serve the students of Virginia Beach for over two decades. During his tenure, Virginia Beach schools expanded student opportunities and options through academies, the Advanced Technology Center, and many other programs. Dan has seen a lot of change in the city and the school system, but one thing that has not changed is Dan's constant commitment to our students. For every issue that's come before this Board, Dan's filter is always, what's in the best interest of students? That is a question I heard over and over with every issue that came to this Board. So how many students have come through our school system? I'm sure there's someone in this building who will give us that exact number, but I did some quick math, and I figured, we're over 100,000 students that have graduated while Dan has served on this Board, and each and every one of them is better off because Dan asked, what's in the best interest of our students? As a former colleague of Dan's, I can assure you that I am also better off, having had the opportunity to sit alongside him and learn from him as he navigated the many viewpoints of fellow Board members, to find common ground, and to do what's in the best interest of our students. I am just one of 43 Board Members to have served with Dan, and it is my pleasure today to present this plaque to you, which reads, Daniel D. Edwards, Chair, Virginia Beach City Public Schools, 1999 to 2016, Member, Virginia Beach City Public Schools, 1998 to 2020. The most important gift one can give to a colleague is a gift of oneself. It is an honor and a privilege to take note of the indelible impact you have made on all of those that had the privilege to serve alongside you. Your example of leadership, dedication, and perseverance will continue to light a path for those that continue to serve. This is a plaque being presented to you, and if you'll take note, on the back of this plaque is the name of every member you've served with from 1998. Thank you, Dan, for everything you've done.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Now remarks from our former School Board Chair, Mrs. Beverly Anderson.
Mr. Edwards, you have steered this Board through many transitions, and you've shared your considerable professional expertise throughout the years. Every year you served with us, you never saw a problem, only an opportunity to make something better. Your energy and devotion to your role was always on display, and because of this, every encounter you've had with students, teachers, and staff are a reminder of why you served on the Board to begin with, and that was to make a positive difference for all. As Chair of the Board for 17 years, your dedication and leadership were helpful in making this school division what it is today. So for the many years you served as Chair of the Board, and of the School Board of the Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and the School Board of the Virginia Beach City Public Schools presents you with this gift, and we wish you continued success and happiness. We will be forever grateful to you for your years of service on this Board and the school This is for all the years that you were Chair of this Board, for 17 years, we present you with this cavel. We also have something very special as well. This is your original name plate that was on this dais for many, many years, and we wanted you to have this as well. Thank you for your service. We will be forever grateful to you for your years of service on this Board and this school division.
Present School Board Member Carolyn Weems just has a few short remarks.
Yes, thank you. Again, Dan, I'm so sorry I had to miss this, but I want to let you know it has been such an honor and pleasure to serve with you these last 18 years. We will definitely miss your leadership. But there is one good thing about Dan leaving. There is.
Yes.
The 11 of us will get to eat more chocolate chip cookies during our dinner break. So Dan, I present to you a plate full of chocolate chip cookies. Check out, and enjoy. Thank you, Dan.
Every group is allowed one inside joke. Thank you, Mrs. Weems. And now I give the floor to our Superintendent, Dr. Spence.
Thank you, Chairwoman Rye. Mr. Edwards, you are familiar with our Compass Keepers Program, and tonight we'd like to share a special video with you.
I think his leadership was really critical during the time I was there, which was a really delicate balance. The school division was very fragile. We had gone through a lot of superintendents in a very short period of time, and although we were a good school division, we weren't addressing very large issues because we couldn't get consistency and balance in our administrative ranks. People were always on edge. Dan provided the leadership that was really, he was open to all points of view. He never cut anybody off. He would bring everybody to the table, and he was always just so reasonable that, you know, we started to listen to each other and actually craft solutions. So I think that culture change that occurred in the late 90s, early 2000s was so critical for all the success that we achieved later.
Mr. Edwards was elected to the School Board in 1988 and has made an invaluable impact in our community. He serves on the Board of Directors for the Tidewater Striders, serves as a Board Member for the Virginia Beach Crime Solvers, and the National Crime Stopper USA Board, and on Boards with the Tidewater College Access Foundation and the Virginia Beach Education Foundation. Mr. Edwards keeps a high-quality education for our students at the forefront of every decision.
Well, I got elected to the School Board in 2002, so Dan and I have served for forever together, and he was so helpful as I came on the Board as a new member. He was such a strong leader as far as making sure that all 11 voices of all 11 Board Members were heard.
I know I personally will miss his experience, his knowledge, his understanding of issues, the way that he carefully and thoughtfully speaks toward issues. I will miss all of that.
He was the first Chair of the Board when I was here, so it was really a great opportunity to transition into this role with him as a Chair. He's a tremendous leader, as I think people know. You know, he's just a tremendous public servant, you know? I think a lot of people know about his long tenure on the School Board and his long tenure as Chair of the Board, but he also is so engaged in so many ways around the community, and you can really tell when you work with Dan that he just has a heart for making our community stronger and better. Always what I've seen excite Mr. Edwards the most is just being able to celebrate when kids succeed, you know? So whether that's in athletics, or whether that's looking at state championships for academics, or whether it's just hearing about the good work of the school division and getting schools accredited and making sure that kids are having opportunities, he really genuinely feels for children in our community, and I think that he wants them to succeed, and, you know, he's on the School Board for that reason.
I salute your decades-long commitment to public education and the children of this school division. I wish for you, Sue, and your beautiful family in Denver, good health and new memories to enjoy. Godspeed.
Well, Mr. Edwards, tonight is a really special occasion for so many people, I think, and I would like to just thank all of the honored guests who've come here tonight, and just remind you, Mr. Edwards, that they've all shown up here for you, and to celebrate your tenure, and to speak to your commitment, as I said, not just to Virginia Beach City Public Schools, but to this incredible city that we all call home. And I'd like to just for a second express my gratitude for your service. It is hard for me not to imagine this chamber without you. Obviously, you've been here since I arrived, and as I said in that video, you were the first Chair that I had the opportunity to work with. I went back and looked at it. I noted as Chair, you presided over 564 meetings, and of course, countless committee meetings, retreats, and other workshops. Folks don't know this, you are one of the longest-serving School Board Chairs in the entire state of Virginia in its history, and you really have provided leadership and guidance and support, not just to me, Mr. Edwards, but to so many, including three other superintendents, and over 40 Board Members, as we've heard before, and of course, to countless Division Staff, many of whom are here in the room tonight to honor you. Your passion, your resolve, your advocacy, your commitment to our community, it's commendable, and you deserve recognition. And so many thanks for everything that you've done. On behalf of the staff, I'd like to thank you for the support we have always felt from you and for your leadership moving this division forward. And so we're here to recognize you, and we also have a special gift for you. You gonna pull that up for me, Regina? So now, there's a story here, and I just want to tell it really quickly. It is, Mr. Edwards, if you recall, yeah, so he's pointing to it, he knows the story. So when we changed our logo and our district motto from Ahead of the Curve to Charting the Course, I presented Mr. Edwards with his new lapel pin. If you know Dan, you never see him without a lapel pin, and so I presented him with his new lapel pin, to which he looked at and said, I prefer the old one. And so, sir, we got to a coffee table with the old logo that you presided over as Chair for so long, and so it says, Virginia Beach City Public Schools, Ahead of the Curve with the old logo. It's in Dr. Bergen's office, and we'll make arrangements to get it to your house. So that is appreciation on the part of all of Division Staff for your leadership, sir. We appreciate you so much, and thank you for everything you've done. And I forgot to mention just quickly, that was actually done in-house by some very talented people, and I just want to call them out. So our maintenance team, Michael Drury and Michael Wilson, our maintenance supervisors, Frederick Benese, I think I got that right, a maintenance craftsman, Keith Mosley, carpentry craftsman, and Andy Westhoff, carpentry craftsmen, who really, you could see the talented work our people do, but wanted to do this for you, and so we appreciate their hard work as well.
Well, I may have a few words at the very end of the meeting tonight, but this sounded like an obituary, but, you know, it's not. All those other groups that were mentioned throughout, they're counting on me, and I assure you, I will be looking for ways to, new ways to support the schools, because my passion for what we have done for the last 22 years is still there. I'm looking forward to new, more discretionary ways of exercising that passion, but I'm excited, I'm proud. Again, I don't need to restate all the good stuff we did the last 22 years, but I'm proud to have been a part of it. The folks that are assembled around the back of the room and their... it. The folks that are assembled around the back of the room and their predecessors are, you know, we hire good superintendents. If the board's doing its job, we do that right. And then he makes the back of the room fill in with the quality that we have had for the last twenty-two years. And so you guys who, and gals, who then who then fill the schools with all the good teachers and hire all the right staff to do, you know, it's a domino thing which rolls right into the, you know, the student desks and the buildings, which will hopefully be filled early next month. And that's enough. I won't go any further down that road yet. But anyway, I want to thank everybody. And we do have some serious business to get to tonight. So I, for those that are waiting for that, I apologize for this interlude. And but, Madam Chair, let's go.
Understood. Okay, following Mr. Edwards' command, we are at the adoption of the agenda portion of this meeting. So with that, are there any modifications to the agenda? Hearing none. May I, is there a motion to approve? Mr. Edwards, a second. Mrs. Anderson, please show your approval by a raised hand.
We have a unanimous vote, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We need to ask our Zoom participants, somebody is not muted. Okay, and now we're ready for the Superintendent Report. Dr. Spence.
Thank you. And good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Here's just a few items of interest for you and for our families to know. On this December 15, as we approach the winter holiday break, please remember that all schools and administrative buildings will be closed beginning Wednesday, December 23 through Friday, January the 1. The full division calendar, of course, is always available on vbschools.com. Although instruction is now virtual, our food service does continue. Bag meals are being provided Monday through Friday from 10:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., with the Friday bag containing breakfast and lunch for Saturday and Sunday. These meals, as a reminder, may be picked up from any school, regardless of where your child is enrolled. VBCPS also offers weekday meal delivery to multiple neighborhoods. A list of those neighborhoods and delivery times can be found on our social media or attached to the family letter, the family's letter that you received last Thursday. Buses arrive at these stops and will remain there for twenty minutes before moving to their next stop, so parents and/or students can pick up meals at these stops for all children under eighteen living in their household. Don't miss tomorrow's Parent Connection Zoom at 6 p.m., which will focus on parenting in a pandemic. Our guests are Marie Renner, Director of Community Partnerships at Kimpfville Center for Behavioral Health, and Danell Riglioso from Family Insight PC, which is a local group of mental health professionals that serves children and adults with support programs. They will be offering guidance for families and providers on navigating parenting life in the virtual environment. Register for this webinar by visiting the link on vbschools.com. As a reminder, applications for academies and advanced academic programs are now available, and the deadline to get those applications in is quickly approaching. So please visit vbschools.com or the specific school or center's webpage for details. In addition, students in grades eleven, eight through eleven are encouraged to check out and apply to the Virginia Beach Technical and Career Education Center, which offers twenty-three credential technical programs that provide high school juniors and seniors opportunities for career exploration and preparedness. And don't forget, all middle and high school families are invited to the first ATC or Advanced Technology Center Imagine Con 2020, which is tomorrow at 5:30 p.m. There you can explore all the ATC has to offer from the comfort of your home during this virtual event. Find out about classes in web design, cybersecurity, engineering, hospitality, and tourism management, architecture, gaming, Cisco, modeling and simulation, marketing and entrepreneurship, and much more. And finally, the division is now hiring for a variety of positions, including bus drivers, staff for our awesome custodial teams, and more, with both day and night vacancies open for immediate hire. We offer growth potential, leadership development programs, comprehensive benefits, and holidays off, and many of our positions also include summers off. So visit vbschools.com to view positions and apply now. Thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Okay, this now brings us to the public hearing portion of our meeting. Public hearing on fiscal year 2021, twenty, twenty-one to twenty-two school operating budget and, forgive me here, and the 2021-22 through 2026-27 capital improvement program. This part of the agenda is to provide the public an opportunity to provide input and suggestions regarding the fiscal year 21-22 operating budget and the fiscal year 21-22 through 26-27 capital improvement budget before these budgets are developed. And Madam Chair, it's my understanding, Madam Clerk, excuse me, my understanding, we have one speaker.
Yes, Kelly Walker, please unmute.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chairman Melnick, Superintendent Spence, and members of the School Board. My name is Kelly Walker, and I serve as the President of the Virginia Beach Education Association. I am here this evening to comment on the 2020-21 upcoming budget discussions. First, I would like to thank you, Mr. Dan Edwards, for all that you have done for our schools and our employees for over the past twenty-two years. We may not have always agreed on things, but you always listened and supported what was best for our schools, and I will miss working with you and wish you and your family well. And now on to my formal comments. Last year, the VBA Board of Directors developed a ten-year review of Virginia Beach City Public Schools instructional pay. The study provided an analysis of the instructional scale in comparison to regional school divisions and reported on local trends germane to the instructional scale from 2008 to 2018. We also analyzed a variety of factors that influence the take-home pay of employees. We found that average teacher salary, as a function of experience, decreased relative to surrounding school divisions. VBCPS pays more at the front of the instructional pay scale. However, teachers rapidly fall behind over the course of their career. In fact, as we combined data from 2020, we found that this trend continues. Our updated review, which will be released in January, states that after five years of service, fifty-six percent of new teachers will quit, which is an increase of one percent from last year. Furthermore, the pandemic has accelerated the number of teachers who have retired or resigned from VBCPS. From July to November in 2019, ninety-two teachers retired or resigned. In comparison to this year, we lost over two hundred and ten teachers. Furthermore, VBCPS normally hires, on average, of two hundred and nineteen teachers with experience every year. This year, only a hundred and twenty-two with experience. The numbers do not lie and signal that the teacher shortage is real and demands that we take a long, deep look at the budget to find solutions to this problem. Therefore, the VBA would like to offer the following recommendations. First, teachers at the five, ten, fifteen, and twenty-year level of service are often making less than starting teachers. The starting teacher salary in 2010 has gone up by twenty-three percent, while the average teacher salary has gone up by less than five percent. Experienced teachers are falling behind. The step system is broken and adjusts, so please adjust the step scale to reflect the true experience. Second, adopt all of the budget recommendations outlined in the HR briefing from the last meeting. If choices must be made, the VBA would see the reframing of the teacher assistant pay scale as one of the top priorities, as teacher assistants are not paid what they are worth, and it is especially difficult retaining special education assistance. Third, create a task force that will formulate short, medium, long-term goals for attracting and retaining educators to VBCPS. The task force would include stakeholders from city council, school board, city and school administrations, the VBA, as well as other interested parties. Effects from the pandemic, revenue streams from the local and state level, program alignments, and other factors should be considered when the task force makes its recommendations. The bottom line is this, we are facing an imminent crisis if we do not address this situation now. Educators were behind on, thank you, on pay and compensation before the pandemic, and now it is even worse. Did you know that Virginia ranks thirty-fourth in teacher pay? And in fact, on average, Virginia Beach teachers are paid almost seven percent less than the state average. And until 2015, Virginia Beach paid more than the state average by almost four percent. We are continuing down the rabbit hole when it comes to pay and compensation through years of stagnant pay raises or raises that barely cover the rate of inflation have left its toll. And while the VBA, oh, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And just a note, a note to the public that there will be a second public hearing on the budget sometime in February. Okay, with that, Agenda Item 10, Approval of Meeting Minutes, the December 1, 2020 Regular School Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any modifications? Hearing none. A motion to approve? Mrs. Felton, and a second?
Second.
Well, we got Mrs. Halt, but thank you. All right, please show your raised hand for approval. Ms. Riggs, how do you vote? Ms. Riggs, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion has been approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, now on to Hearing of Citizens and Delegations on Agenda Items. The School Board will now hear comments on Agenda Items from citizens and delegations who signed up with our clerk prior to this meeting. In-person speakers will be called first, followed by speakers participating through Zoom or telephone. As a reminder, each speaker has four minutes to present and will be given a thirty-second warning before time expired. Once the speaker's time has expired, the speaker is asked to stop making remarks, so the next speaker will be cued to speak. Please keep in mind, the School Board invites the public to also submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. Madam Clerk, would you please introduce the first speaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first speaker this evening is Stephen Schmittler.
Welcome.
Chairwoman Rye, Dr. Spence, School Board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. First, a huge thank you to Dr. Spence and his administration, his COVID Task Force, for putting together a complex and comprehensive plan for educating during this pandemic. And heartfelt thank you to all the teachers and staff who've worked, and are working tirelessly to prepare and educate in an extremely challenging situation. I'm a retired teacher and coach. After teaching my first two years in Wisconsin, I moved here and served VBCPS from 1980 to 2014. I enjoyed a very rewarding career, and I am grateful for this school division. It's one of the best. Tonight, however, I speak as a parent, the parent of a sixteen-year-old boy with Down Syndrome. Our son is in tenth grade. He loves his school. He loves his teachers and classmates. He is thriving when he is receiving in-person instruction. Like most of his peers, he struggles with virtual learning. I wish all of you could witness what I experience every day, watching special needs students trying to learn in Zoom meetings all day. This population sometimes struggles with the technology, and even more so with getting content through a computer screen for five hours, five hours every day. Sometimes the Wi-Fi acts up, a barking dog distracts, a TV is heard in the background. Those distractions are difficult for students like my son. Fortunately, I'm able to be at home and help while he attends virtually. If I was still working, we'd have to hire someone to assist him. He could not handle it alone. My son's teachers, by the way, are exceptional in putting together meaningful lessons, but it is not nearly as effective. They would be the first to tell you these students are suffering by not being in school, where they receive immediate help, feedback, encouragement that cannot be delivered through a computer screen. A little more than two weeks ago, my son was in school, while the percent positivity was hovering around nine point nine percent. Over the weekend, it went to ten point one, and just like that, we're virtual. I applaud the school division's ability to shift at the drop of a hat. That transition, albeit impressive, is difficult for students with special needs. In fact, sometimes traumatic. I don't believe my son was less safe at ten point one percent positivity than he was at nine point nine percent. This group of students especially needs consistency and in-person learning. So I'm here primarily to ask you to revisit the metrics, the data, the rubric used to open and close schools. Based on the excellent safety protocols implemented by Dr. Spence in this extraordinary school system, I believe we can be safe in school, even when the percent positivity is above ten percent. You have proven that our children can be in school and be safe. The school system's website with its COVID dashboard shows that clearly. I do understand an ongoing concern for staff members who may be more vulnerable if they were to contract COVID in school. I am more concerned, however, about the ongoing harm, not hypothetical, harm being done to children and families when schools are closed. An overwhelming number of students are not getting what they need, instructionally, psychologically, while at home. So many articles agree that long-term school closings will have long-term ill effects, and especially in less affluent households. Some students may never fully recover academically. From CHKD, October 29, mental health volume, mental health care volume up three hundred percent. Eighteen percent of high school students considered suicide. Seven point four percent attempted suicide. In closing, I ask, please consider
Thirty seconds.
revising the metrics and rubric. Please consider getting our children back in school. We know you can do that safely. If anything this pandemic has shown, it's how valuable public education is, especially when teachers who are engaging, encouraging, committed to reaching young people, are in the classroom with them every day. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Becky Hay. Welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Spence and members of the School Board. It's time for our School Board to send Option One students, those who chose face-to-face education in July, back to school. At the last School Board meeting, the Board stuck to the metrics and plan it approved months ago in July. Those metrics need to be updated based on what has been learned the past several months. Based on an increasing body of data, COVID transmission schools is extremely low. It is time for the Board to stop focusing on the community burden metrics of case counts and percent positivity, and instead look at the individual transmission rates and the efficacy of mitigation efforts. Numerous school districts around the country, and as close as Chesapeake, have utilized this approach safely and successfully. In addition, the incremental approach of closing individual classrooms or schools rather than the whole district based on positive cases or outbreaks has allowed for the most students possible to remain face-to-face. The Board has repeatedly stated that it wants to follow the science, the data. While the science is saying that in-school transmission is by far the exception, and when outbreaks do occur, it is typically related to a breakdown of mitigation efforts. The science tells us that, according to the VDH K-12 outbreak webpage, that while in person, Virginia Beach experienced no outbreaks at any location. The science tells us that the number and acuity level of students being admitted to area hospitals for mental health reasons and suicide attempt and ideation is significant compared to last year, and virtual learning is often cited as a major factor. In addition, inpatient psychiatric facilities are frequently at capacity, causing students to go without needed care. The science is telling us that the achievement gap is growing and student engagement is declining. Face-to-face instruction for students needs to be a priority, as the mental health and academic success of our students significantly declines, the longer virtual learning is imposed on those who do not want it due to a variety of important factors. The School Board needs to immediately reevaluate its metrics it's using to determine when students can return to school. The Board has an opportunity tonight to show students and families throughout Virginia Beach that our students' overall well-being is a priority. The Board needs to accept the reality that prolonged virtual, I'm sorry, virtual learning is failing our students and provide the immediate remedy of returning Option One students to face-to-face learning. For weeks now, decisions have been made and stuck to based on maybes, might-be's, could-be's. It is long past time that decisions are based on what is happening to our students as they continue to struggle through the myriad of issues virtual learning presents. My mother, a retired teacher of thirty-five years, is appalled at how Virginia Beach has allowed My mother, a retired teacher of 35 years, is appalled at how Virginia Beach has allowed this situation to go on as long as it has, leaving families and students frustrated and hopeless. I am part of a large group of parents, teachers, and community stakeholders that have been pushing for choice for face-to-face instruction, for our choice to be honored by this administration and board. And our numbers are growing as the frustrations and failings of virtual learning are compounded daily. We will not go away, we will not back down from advocating for our students. Instead of being ahead of the curve, Virginia Beach City Public Schools run the risk of being so far behind the curve, that success for many of our students will no longer be attainable. We are losing students, both emotionally and academically. The time to respond to this crisis is now. Please change our planned metrics and send our option one students back into the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Colleen Clementston.
Welcome. Good evening. This past October, I had the wonderful opportunity to sub back in Virginia Beach Public Schools when the schools reopened. It happened to be the same time as my husband returned from Japan after two years of being gone with the Navy. And he will tell you, he doesn't know what I was more excited about, going back into the classroom, or him being home. That's still up for debate here. But I will say, Dr. Spence, I have to applaud you, the district, the school administrators and staff, for the impressive safety mitigations that I found within the schools. I was just overwhelmed at the positive mitigations that I found. PPE was at the ready, masks and gloves, disinfectant spraying, clean rags to wipe down any surface that I deemed necessary. The plexiglass partitions were used in classrooms, both the teacher-working tables, and also with group and student pods, so students could be together but be safely separate. Even the students, as we were walking the halls, were staying socially distant, kept their masks on, and reminding me, a lot of the times, Ms. Clementston, it's time to use our hand sanitizer, which was frequently available and ready. All this made me feel very safe and secure. Now, a lot of people don't know this fact, but I will share it with you. I'm a 43-year-old woman with two kids, and I have not one but two autoimmune diseases. So when I get sick, I go down hard. It could be from a cold, it could be from the flu, it could be from any sort of bacterial infection. So I take my health and safety very seriously. And as a military spouse, I don't have the luxury of having family around to call at an incident to come and take care of my family when I go down. We've been very fortunate that we haven't had to do that yet. So I can say to all those teachers out there, who feel scared that the schools are not safe to come into to teach, that yes, they are indeed safe. Because the safety mitigations that we are using in the schools throughout the district are the exact same mitigations that my mom has utilized in her 46 years of nursing in an inner-city hospital in New Jersey. For 46 years, from 1970 to 2016, my mother went in every day. Now think about all the infectious diseases, transmittable diseases, and contagious diseases and viruses that were through this time. And not once did she ever bring those home and transfer them to us, simply because she followed the safety mitigations in place. She wore her paper mask, she wore her plastic gloves, they cleaned, they used hand sanitizer. She came home, she changed her clothes, everything we're asking our students and families to do now. So once again, I have to say that the schools are safe. Now, I have listened to the Education Association, and as a former teacher, I know firsthand teacher safety is a priority, and I do not downplay that at all. And they are asking for nothing more than a solid leave plan for if they or a family member get COVID and need to stay home, and I wholeheartedly support that. Teaching is the only profession that year after year, we are asked to do more with less. Budget cuts, cuts and raises, cuts in pay, but yet, we still continue on. In my first three years of teaching, I don't know how many thousands of dollars I spent trying to update my classroom or provide for my students. But I did it anyway. Why? Because I was teacher, because it was my kids. But schools are never going to be safe. It's just not, it's just a fact of life. Life is not safe. Yesterday, we celebrated, yesterday was the eighth anniversary of Sandy Hook, and 13 years before that was Columbine. And when these tragedies happened, we just looked at safety mitigations and moved. So I'm asking you, we have safety mitigations in place. Please, please redo the metrics, as the virus and our knowledge of our virus evolves, we need to evolve with it too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Thomas Conant.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here as a grandparent and concerned taxpayer. I got involved in this issue because I saw firsthand the frustration and sadness of my granddaughter when she was kept out of the vital in-person educational, social contacts every student needs. Entering high school, she chose to attend the Visual and Performing Arts Academy at Salem High School, due to her interest in and talent in music. Over the years, she excelled in the various course opportunities, and saw those ahead of her promoted into the higher-level singing groups. As a senior, 2020 would have been her year to get to do what she had seen others do for three years. Instead, she sits in front of a computer screen for classes, and attends some sort of virtual music activities. She was required to audition for senior honors in district choirs, an audition she felt was wasting her time, because the school couldn't tell the students whether the concert would be in-person, virtual, or even held at all. She envisions the memory of her senior year being a virtual concert, or the disappointment of a canceled one. And neither she nor her parents have any choice in the matter. I've spoken with parents who are equally as concerned and frustrated with what used to be one of the best school systems in the region. One says his teen son, a talented baseball player, used to be interested in getting outside, practicing, playing baseball, spending time with friends. Without the interaction with teachers, students, and sports, he only wants to stay inside, doing his classes virtually, and playing video games. Another says her elementary-age daughter wants to be back in school. She says the virtual class cuts out regularly, and her daughter is actually on her third Chromebook. It just doesn't work. Still, another says her ninth-grade son is already talking about dropping out of school and getting his education via online schooling, since there is no benefit to being enrolled in our public school system. He has no interaction with other students. One frustrated grandmother of a first grader says her grandson has at least one to two meltdowns a day, and said to her one day, "You know, that wouldn't happen if I was in school." That's a six-year-old. The bottom line from these parents is that their children are missing out on social interaction, sports, personal contact with teachers, and other vital activities that cannot be duplicated via Zoom. In a free society, we must be, what must be done is to give parents the choice. Parents know what level of risk they want for their households, should be allowed to choose whether their children attend in-person, participate in sports, sing in concerts, and get to graduate with their friends, or if they prefer to do their schooling in a virtual setting. Those with comprised immune systems, older-at-risk family members, or who are just not ready to get back in the classroom can have the virtual option. Instead, this school board has taken the choice away and dictated what's going to happen. That is not a free society. You can give parents a choice. Set up a camera in the classroom, teach the students who are there while broadcasting the same class on Zoom to those who choose to stay at home. I urge you to act in the interest of all the students and parents in Virginia Beach, and adopt a plan that is based on the clear facts that younger people up to college age do not experience severe outcomes, nor spread this disease as readily as those who are older, and that schools have not been a source of spread. Do whatever needs to be done to get our classrooms open for the next semester, for any who want to be there.
30 seconds. Thank you. So that leads us to the online speaker portion of the program. Let me just add this following remark to our online speakers. It's not necessary for speakers to ask if they can be heard. Speakers should begin speaking once their name is called. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please introduce the first speaker? Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speaker is Rose Alexis Nine. Please unmute. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Rose Nine. I am a ninth grader from GRC, and I'm here to talk about the recent decisions on SOL testing. And I would like the school board to consider canceling all testing until we are in the green zone. So I feel that the school board should have asked parents how they feel about their kids going to school while we're in the red zone, and teachers, if they feel comfortable going to school supervising the kids. 60% chose face-to-face, while 40% chose virtual, but a lot of face-to-face students switched to virtual once the numbers got higher. So my question to you all is, why wasn't there a server to community, to the community after, about SOL testing, like there was a server about learning preference? I would like to ask you all to consider doing a server on SOL testing, so you, so you all can have a little bit of feedback on how the community feels. Since you don't have the information, since you don't have that information, you don't fully understand how the community is feeling about this right now. I, myself, took a server on, to my peers and on Instagram, asking them how they feel about the SOL testing, and 70% of them said that they are very uncomfortable with that. You guys have a quote that reads, "Put students first, seek growth, be open to change, do great to work together, value differences." So we as a community should work together and better our communication, so we, so we can understand each other. Thank you for your time, and have a great day.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pamela Wittem. Please unmute. Welcome. Madam Chair, she is not online. We will go to the next speaker, John Boyd. Please unmute. Welcome.
Thank you. Time, and I want to start by saying, I really appreciate the work that the school board and school division has done, in trying to keep our students, our teachers, and our community safe. I want to talk tonight, I'm not certain if it's coming up in the agenda, I didn't see it on there, so I'd sign up for, to speak in the non-agenda portion, but I wanted to talk about the four-by-four schedule, specifically as it impacts my two children. One's an 11th grader at our school division, the other's a 7th grader in our school division, and then as it impacts my students, as I'm a teacher in the school division as well. I noticed an issue probably about a month in, but it's been steadily compounding, and it's not necessarily getting better, but the pacing of the four-by-four is really hurting my, my personal children. It's essentially, as soon as school ends, they work on homework, and then they stop, like my son stops doing homework when he goes to bed, and he goes to bed late at night. The pacing currently consists of learning new material, do homework that night, the next day, learn new material, do homework that night, new material, over and over again, you know, repeated. And with the A-B schedule, there's, you know, you would learn the material, you had a chance to process, to work on questions, to ask teachers for help, then, you know, advance the material after that. And I do understand going to the four-by-four, because people had complained last year about the amount of work they were trying to, you know, monitor with, with so many classes. But, and, and I get it on a virtual setting while we're doing it, but I just want you to know the impacts of it going on right now. I surveyed my students, because I wanted to make sure this just wasn't something that was happening with my kids, and see if it was indicative of a larger issue. With the students, when they replied to my survey, they talked about that the increased workload has an effect on their mental health, that it's difficult to complete all their, their work, the extremely fast pace, the point where they can't keep up, and if they can't keep up, they don't learn the material. They mentioned over and over again, there were no electives, so they're taking four classes, and if they, if they have four academic classes and no electives during that term, then, then, you know, the students say they have nothing to look forward to. The elective is the class they elect to take, so they're just bombarded, you know, at, you know, with so much work, especially from higher-level classes, it makes it difficult to, to move forward. Much more work in a shorter time, heavy classes like calculus and physics are difficult, and having them every day with no days in between is very difficult, and they're worried about preparing for AP, and I teach at Prince of San High School, AP and IB tests, which are in May. So if a student finishes the class in January, between February and May, in order to keep the material fresh and current, they'll have to do essentially bootcamps. And that'll be on top of the bootcamps that they'll do concurrently with the AP and IB classes they're in for that term. When you teach an extracurricular, as I do, I'm the band director at Prince of San, or a co-curricular, there's no time at all, their time is extremely encumbered with everything they're doing in class, just to keep up and maintain for the schedule we used to have. Since the students feel since their classes are condensed, they have a harder time getting a good grasp of the concept, because there's so much information coming, you know, constantly at them. The students feel mentally drained, morally drained, it's impacting their motivation to learn. And that's just from the perspective of kids in class and the pacing. I speak with my band parents, who are telling me that their kid looks forward to band, because every, you know, I know those kids, some of them's in sixth grade, and this is the class where they get their social, emotional learning done during the course of the day. We're able to activate a different part of their brain for them. So I'm, I'm not certain what's going on with it in the future. I'm not certain what's, you know, going to happen with affecting the schedule as it is, but I want you to know that at least from my perspective, and I'm sure other people have other perspectives, but at least from mine, my personal kids are hurting. I'm concerned about my students that are in school, I'm concerned about the band. And thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tracy Leekid. Please unmute.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you, school board, and thank you, school board member, Dan Edwards, for your longtime leadership and inspiration. I support special ed, the special ed staff and students. And the decision to keep us particularly in-person when we were red and rising was, was wrong. It was disheartening, and it was dangerous. I feel that I speak for special ed staff that I know, you know, not necessarily in my school, and also CSAP felt the same way. I hope that we don't repeat that mistake and drive people out of special ed when it's so critically needed. When we do return to in-person, I feel that we should be more creative with particularly sped, who most students cannot mask, which is, as Dr. Rowland said during the workshop, she implored that masking is important, and it works. Masking is not possible in most special ed classes. So that puts staff and other students, therefore their families, at risk. It's wrong. We need to figure something out. Perhaps getting all of special ed staff and administrators together to collaborate, like in Dan Edwards style, get everyone at the table to speak and figure out creative ways to approach this need for in-person, but we need to do it safely. Sometimes a class may have as many students, may have as many staff as students because of needs, the teacher aides and specialists. So when masking isn't possible, distancing is needed. Distancing can be impossible in working with sped. Toiling reasons, we speak with our body, body language to calm children, to communicate when words can't be processed by sped students, it's too much. Like a hand gesture, or calming them on their backs when they're crying. You can't distance at six feet, or three feet, whatever we decide as safe. But CDC, VDOE, they all said, if masking is not possible, distancing is critical in sped cases. So we need to come up with better solutions to educate our sped students and keep our sped staff and families safe. Lastly, I think we need to demand more from our community. We need to work with these key areas, the gyms, restaurants, and bars, the families, get them on our side, work with them creatively and collaboratively, so that they can be a part of this preventing and stopping the spread. We need to demand more, so that we all can be in-person, which is what everybody would like to do when it is safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lulani Gilligan. Please unmute. Welcome.
Good evening. Again, my name's Lulani Gilligan, and I want to thank you for serving our community and allowing me to have the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm lending my voice to a friend who is a Virginia Beach City Schools educator, and sadly, just didn't feel safe to speak up themselves tonight. But before I get to that, I'm compelled to remind the board that the parents are being forced to decide whether our kids are going back to school, February through June, June of 2015. February through June, June of two thousand twenty one by this Friday. So we have to make some big decisions in our families. And as a parent, and I know this goes for many parents, we're basing that decision off of the metrics that have been in place. I think tonight, when I I've listened and, you know, that there's considering whether to change those metrics. As early as January with the numbers that we currently have, it's very alarming. And I I'm sure that I'm not the only parent that's feeling that. So I wanted to make sure that I put that out there because that December eighteenth date is is weighing heavy on a lot of families right now. Now, on to the comments from my friend who is a Virginia Beach City Schools educator. I am so disappointed in what I heard tonight, but equally by what I didn't hear. So not necessarily because of the recommendation of a few of our medical panelists, but because they are calling the absence of evidence, evidence. Until New York City began testing twenty percent of all students and staff last week, there was no information on what asymptomatic spread exists, particularly in elementary age students. In just one week of testing, ten percent of all schools closed due to high case numbers. Now, it's too soon yet to know with that contrast contract tracing whether those are related to outbreaks or not, but that data should be coming. But most of the cases were asymptomatic as New York City only has elementary schools in person currently. So that means that we could be seeing spread and it would never be caught without testing because if Susie brings it to school and gives it to Mrs. Smith, but Susie never has symptoms, Mrs. Smith's case will never be connected to Susie or to school spread. So that doesn't, but that does not mean it's not happening. And so there's that lack of evidence that can be scary. But why is it that even after we have scientific proof that in a cafe in South Korea, one person was infected twenty feet away in just five minutes? Now we think six feet is sufficient. In this example, the person across the table from them was not infected, but someone twenty feet away and one other person twelve feet away were. And under our model, it would appear as though there have been no spread in a classroom or cafeteria when there certainly would be. So while I plead with you to stick to the metric that you promised to the community and have repeatedly told us would not waver from, our parents chose based on those metrics. Those staff who have a choice chose based on those metrics. And you've not resurveyed anyone, but now you're thinking about throwing those metrics out. And one thing I heard tonight that really disturbed me is that the schools are not gyms and the schools are not restaurants. But yes, they kind of are. Schools are gyms. Our students have P E daily, and schools are also restaurants. Worse than Town Center, in fact, with a hundred and fifty students in a cafeteria unmasked, even six feet apart, those employees working for hours on end around hundreds of unmasked students are at a profound risk. This affects all of our schools when they were open. And if you decide to eventually return select groups while it is still more dangerous than any of us agreed to, then please consider if masking is enough to prevent school spread. And that is still very much undetermined by the data, then we need to eliminate all unmasked times. Meals are currently already bagged and free, so perhaps the school day needs to be shortened and we can send food home instead of feeding them at school. As long as schools are restaurants, are restaurants, and we know it can spread fast, sending students and staff back is
Please follow up with additional remarks.
Our next speaker is Brenda Harris. Please unmute. Welcome. Ms. Harris is not online, so that ends our speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, this brings us now to the consent agenda portion of our meeting. And the following items are presented as part of tonight's consent agenda. One, textbook adoptions, A P Computer Science, A. B, recommendations of general contractor for one, Green Run and Bayside High School's synthetic turf track improvements. Two, Ocean Lakes High School boiler plant replacement. Are there modifications to the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. Motion to approve, Mrs. Haltz and a second, Mr. Edwards. Please show your approval with a raised hand. Ms. Weems, how do you vote? Ms. Weems, how do you vote? Ms. Weems? Can we go ahead and proceed without her? Okay. Chairwoman Wright, we have eight yeses and one abstention.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved.
Okay, the action portion of tonight's agenda, beginning with personnel report administrative appointments. Motion to approve. Mrs. Felton and a second, Mrs. Anderson. Any discussion? Okay, please show your approval with a raised hand. Ms. Weems, how do you vote? Madam Chair, we have eight in approval and one abstention, so the motion did pass.
Thank you.
Dr. Spence, I believe you have at least one appointment to share.
Yes, ma'am, I do. Thank you. This evening, I'm pleased that to 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 let you know about Jacqueline Blair. Jackie has served with distinction as a teacher in Northern Virginia School System. She's been in Virginia Beach as a teacher at Brandon Middle, Bayside High School, Green Run High School. Most recently, has been serving as an administrative assistant at Larkspur Middle School. And we appreciate your approving our recommendation for Ms. Blair to serve as the next assistant principal at Larkspur Middle School. So congratulations to her. And as with others, we'll be bringing them back at a future board meeting for what is now proving to be a rather lengthy formal recognition.
They'll be lined up down the George Mason Street Drive. Okay, thank you. Action item B, textbook adoptions, element, beginning with elementary art. Motion to approve. Mrs. Felton and second, Mrs. Holtz. Discussion? We see Dr. De Vries here at the podium waiting and Mr. Buhner, and we have Mr. Edwards.
To remind my colleagues, this was the, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, where we are using, gonna go proposing going forward with a textbook where there has been none before. And
Correct.
I I left, if that's correct, I I left the last meeting unconvinced that we needed a textbook. I've just given given the uncertainty of the financial times. I know there's money in the textbook fund and it's not, yeah. But I'm just not sure it's the right thing to do. And I, again, I I'm not trying to put you on the defensive, but I mean, if you have any comments or my colleagues have any thoughts, I I think we should talk about it.
Well, good evening, everybody, and and thank you for this opportunity to be in front of you again. Just as a brief recap of last school board meetings discussion around elementary art textbooks. We are seeking approval for adoption of Davis Digital's Exploration in Art for Grades One through Five students. The initial cost is over just over two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars with over just over two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars each year. After that, for the remaining five years, for a total cost of approximately four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. When broken down, the student resource costs two dollars and seventy-five cents per student per year for approximately twenty-seven thousand elementary students who would utilize it. As a reminder, in case you didn't know, the new visual arts S O Ls will be fully implemented next fall, in the fall of two thousand twenty-one. They're a bit different than they have been in the past with a intensive focus on creative process and critical thinking and communication, historical culture and citizenship and innovation. And the committee really felt like this ebook provides the needed resources to to this new approach to art education. The other thing that we discussed last school board meeting was that we anticipate that by the start of the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year, we will have nearly fifty percent of our elementary art teachers with three years or less of elementary art teaching experience for V B C P S. So with the additional demands of being a teacher today, as you know, these cutting-edge resources will ensure that our staff is fully prepared to deliver visual arts instruction of the highest quality. There were a couple of questions last time about O E Rs and did we consider O E Rs? So just to address that quickly. As a reminder, the first step in our textbook adoption process is always to do a search for O E Rs. That's been in the recent, probably the past five years, including research as to what other school divisions may be using. In this case, there were not any developmentally appropriate or comprehensive O E Rs out there to review. And in the school divisions research that we did of other school divisions, several of them are using this this resource K through twelve. The second step in the process, after we found that there are not any suitable O E Rs, was to go through the R F P process. And an R F P was issued. Davis Digital was the only company that responded to the R F P. There are not a ton of instructional resources out there for art. However, that didn't mean we chose them by default because this is a resource that elementary art teachers have been requesting for quite a few years because of its high quality and comprehensive nature. This Davis Digital has agreed to our request to divide the total cost of the adoption over the six years and has agreed to provide yearly pricing for an additional two years beyond that at the request of the school division. This would take us to the next anticipated date of S O L revisions. We anticipate that there might again be some changes seven years from now. So having a hard copy textbook may not be suitable as it may no longer be aligned seven years from now. So again, the the resource is very cost effective. When broken down for the twenty-seven thousand students, we're talking two dollars and seventy-five cents per year, per student. And if we kept it for eight years, that cost would remain about the same for those students. So I thank you for your time once again, and I have Mr. Buhner, the coordinator of Visual Arts with me. And if you have any additional questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Mrs. Holtz.
Thank you. I just want to mention that years ago, a lot of years ago, when I had art, art was pretty much a piece of blank paper with a box of crayons. I have heard from two different art teachers that I know in the system, and they are just delighted. If I, and their thing was we're finally taking elementary art seriously. And they are so glad that we are considering adopting a book. So I'm with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Felton.
Thank you. Mr. Bruner, Mr. Edwards, then it would bring up a good question about why. So I I know a little bit, but could you explain to us why are you or why is it beneficial for elementary students to have this particular art concept or, Dr. De Vries, if you want to? What are the real benefits behind it? I do know that there are some academic concerns. There are some self-esteem concerns. There are some skill that impact within this, but other than what I already know and you're dabbling, can you give us more, what is beneficial for this particular program?
Sure. So it is a comprehensive resource. The reason why it's beneficial to students at this point and why we hadn't really sought out a textbook in the past is what I had just said earlier with the revisions of the S O Ls, we are, as Mrs. Holtz said, no longer really thinking about cutting and gluing. There is a significant emphasis on the five Cs in art, believe it or not. Reflection, opportunities for reflection and writing are incorporated into that. And so because it's more comprehensive and rigorous, a a comprehensive resource is is necessary in order for teachers to not have to go around and piecemeal things together. You know, it it was a lot easier to come up with a lesson plan for students when art was more simplistic art class. And and there was, the expectation wasn't as high. But the expectation now aligns directly to our profile of a graduate, directly to our, the graduate of a profile for Virginia. And and just like with any other class, we need to make sure we have the rigorous rigorous resources to be able to meet the needs of the course so that students can help develop those skills outside of just your four core academic areas.
Thank you. I do know that the Virginia State Board Association, we do advocate, they are advocating and they are promoting more students being involved with art. And I'm just, it's good to know that we are starting at another level. So by the time they get to where they need to really express themselves, they're gonna have some good skills behind it. So I am for it. I do like the express that's gonna be electronic as well because we're in this technical age now that they're asking for a lot of skin and art reaches a lot of, a lot of things. When you get to college and older you and I've experienced it, it goes into design and it goes to, and a lot of activities that they build on their career. And it is good that students are starting early because companies like Disney and and other businesses, they are looking for students that have a strong background. So I I do appreciate you reaching out and pushing the point for art. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Edwards again.
You mentioned a a couple of other school divisions that had either were or had adopted. Could, do you know which ones?
So Portsmouth has adopted this resource K through twelve. Newport News and Newport News, all middle schools and high schools have this resource, and they are in the middle of adopting the digital version for elementary, all their elementary schools as well. And then up in Stafford County, they have a K through twelve resource with digital Davis.
Okay. Yeah, I think your your staff hopefully appreciates the fact that I've, you know, my my support for the fine arts has been there. But I just don't think we're doing our job if we don't ask the hard question, particularly with, you know, a a precedent here on on a new textbook where we had not had one before. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm Miss Owens.
I just wanted to kind of piggyback off of Mr. Edwards. I I think it's always prudent for us to ask the difficult questions and have those conversations. When I think about the precedent of bringing a textbook in where there hasn't been one before, this is a situation where I I would feel comfortable with that. I don't know of many other subjects. I don't know if there are any other subjects that we are requesting our teachers who all have the the same required teaching credentials to teach our students to to do that without a textbook. When I have an elementary school student who's doing art virtually and the idea of having something in place that's gonna give more consistency across the city makes me feel comfortable when we're talking about brand new teachers coming in because we, for many reasons, are gonna have all these art teachers with less than three years of experience. Making sure that schools that have a brand new art teacher are gonna be able to provide the same experiences as elementary schools who have a ten-year art teacher, providing those both virtually and in person. And so I think right now, where we are in in this pandemic, that there probably has not been a more appropriate time to make sure that we can provide that consistency across our division, both with the virtual and in person with the the things that we are facing. So I I am in support of the textbook. I realize that you all have a limited textbook budget and I trust that you have thought about the money that you are of spending and where it's best going to be used. And so I I trust the administration's judgment on something that you guys have definitely looked into much deeper than than we will have at the board.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson.
I appreciate you bringing forth more information to us this evening, and I agree with my colleagues on that. Ms. Felton and Ms. Owens, in that I'm in support of this at this time. I was I was a little leery about adopting something that we hadn't done in the past and didn't quite understand the need for it, but now I see that and I appreciate you bringing that information to us this evening. Thank you.
So if I may, at the risk of speaking on behalf of other colleagues, but I think part of maybe the struggle lies in that we can all, we can all visualize what a math textbook looks like, even though some of, for some of us, it's been decades, right? Or a social studies book, a science book. And this is, it's a formal school board meeting, so I'm not intending to turn this into a half-hour symposium, but can you give just an example, pick out one lesson plan from what actually does the elementary textbooks, do they get into art history or are they getting into concepts? Can you just elaborate a little more on that?
Yeah, I actually prepared because I suspected that question would be asked this evening. And congratulations, Mr. Edwards, on your career here with the school board. It's been an honor to work for you over the years. So thank you for everything you've done. So what makes ebooks so valuable for kids? So it supports today's learners with curriculum that is rigorous, culturally relevant, easily understood and adaptable for many learning styles of students because of authors who are scholars that are or were seasoned teachers. The curricular content is rigorous with a plethora of supports for all learners. The programs have culturally relevant and diverse artists, which is key these days, and it aligns perfectly with the new SOLs. Artworks that processes that highlight in each chapter. The curriculum is coherent, meaningful, engaging, and draws on the most current best practices of pedagogy and instruction. The lessons and activities are researched, informed, and they actually draw from practices that are proven to be successful with assignments designated to be evidence-based. So all those different pieces are what captivate. And if you looked at one of these textbooks, it would look very similar to what you would find in an English course or a social studies class. It has all the steps that would take a student through inquiry and creative process that then goes into exploration of design, critique, peer observation, back and forth, and then, of course, assessment and the rubric pieces that support our teachers to offer feedback for formative and summative evaluation. So, and I will say this too, that our committee were three of the very best teachers from our city, art teachers, and each one of them overwhelmingly were excited about the opportunity to use this textbook consistently with their kids. So this isn't just for our new teachers, this is for our veteran teachers to support the amazing things that they're doing now and to only strengthen their abilities in the classroom for students. And I want to try to emphasize once again that the work that's coming out of these textbooks also directly aligns into the core work consistently throughout the textbook, Mrs. Ry, where you will see connections made. And to the point too where Davis Digital is happy actually sharing the textbook with the core teachers as well, thus creating more of the cross-studies that will hopefully stick the learning to the wall, as we say. So hopefully that answers your question.
That was very helpful. Thank you. Madam Chair, Ms. Hughes has her hand raised. Yes, go ahead, Mrs. Hughes.
Hi, I actually like the idea of the textbook, and as you just touched on, the gentleman who was just speaking, I believe that all disciplines are related, and it does give you a great opportunity to have crossovers into history and kind of opens the world up to you, other cultures. However, one thing I would like to just say is, the same way I don't think PE should replace recess, it should be in addition to, I'm hoping that this book won't completely replace having paper and crayons because while I think having this aspect of art is important, I also kind of think just handing them crayons and paper and letting them be creative on their own is important. So I hope that this is in addition to for elementary kids.
We agree 100%. And I have to say that it makes my English teacher heart happy when I hear Mr. Buhner talk of, you know, the level of rigor and critique and feedback and reflection that goes into that. And imagine how that could help prompt SOL reading scores, you know, as we're thinking about our third graders and prompting them up and trying to negate some of that slide from COVID or summer slide in ordinary years. So, you know, it's an all, kind of an all-hands-on-deck approach when we're talking about reading and writing and critical thinking, and this really pushes that forward in the art world to an extent that it hadn't before.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hughes. Anybody else? All right, then we'll proceed with our vote. All in favor of textbook adoption for elementary art, kindly raise your hand. Ms. Riggs, how do you vote? Ms. Weems, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the motion passes with nine ayes.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, information portion of our meeting, and Ms. Crystal Pay has been patiently waiting. Welcome.
Thank you.
These are interim financial statements for October 2020.
That's correct. Good evening, Chairwoman Ry, school board members, Dr. Spence. As of October 31st, the overall revenue trend is acceptable as illustrated in our first graph. During a special session, the General Assembly adopted an amended 2020-2022 biennial budget, resulting in updates to the Virginia Department of Education's calculation tool, which was released on October 30th. Items to note in this amended budget, sales tax estimates were revised to reflect downward revisions based on economic conditions due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This revision resulted in a projected decrease from our original budget in sales tax of approximately $9.2 million. Due to the effect of our composite index on the basic aid formula, this reduction in sales tax resulted in an increase in basic aid revenue of approximately $6.7 million. The special session adopted budget also included a one-time COVID-19 local relief payment to divisions to offset the impact of the reduction of sales tax revenue estimates on the local share of basic aid. This resulted in a projected one-time payment to Virginia Beach of approximately $4.6 million. This one-time payment is expected to be updated by the 2021 General Assembly based on subsequent revisions to the sales tax estimates. Last board meeting, you also received an update that during the special session, the General Assembly adopted language that delays reductions to state payments resulting from reduced ADM projections until after the March 31 ADM is calculated. We are hoping the General Assembly will extend this hold harmless to the end of the 2021 fiscal year and provide state payments on the ADMs the state built their budget on. If the General Assembly holds us harmless until the end of the fiscal year and with these most recent updates to the state's revenue projection, we would project a surplus in state revenue of approximately $13.2 million. This is mainly due to the increase of the $6.7 million in basic aid, the one-time COVID-19 local relief payment of $4.6 million, and a surplus of $2.3 million due to the establishment of the Infrastructure and Operations Per Pupil Fund. The state currently has budgeted for Virginia Beach at $14.7 million. This fund replaces the supplemental lottery per pupil revenue stream, which is included in our original budget, at $12.4 million. If we are required to use the lower-than-anticipated March 31 ADM enrollment, and with these same recent state updates to state revenue, we would project a small surplus in state revenue of approximately $277,000. The governor is scheduled to release his amended 2020-2022 biennial budget for the 2021 General Assembly tomorrow, December 16th. At this time, we hope we receive some indication of direction. The decision will be made with regards to the hold harmless provision. At that time too, the Virginia Department of Ed will also release another calculation tool to communicate any additional impacts the amendments may have to school divisions. Federal revenues are also showing an acceptable trend. We have received impact aid payments of approximately $4.8 million from the Department of Defense through the month of October. To date, we have not received any impact aid payments from the U.S. Department of Education. Other sources of revenue through the month of October are lagging compared to prior year. We are seeing a decrease in various activities such as sales of salvage materials, vehicles, and technology assets, a reduction in summer school tuition due to lower enrollment and not charging tuition to students qualifying for free and/or reduced lunch as a result of the pandemic, a delay in receipt of CSET rent due to timing, and a decrease in the stop-arm enforcement program revenue likely to less buses as well as less people on the road. This next graph was the sales tax receipts are at acceptable level year-to-date through October. We are approximately $1.3 million higher than the same time last year. For November, we are showing a reduction in sales tax receipts from November of last year of approximately $400,000. And for December, we are showing an increase in sales tax receipts from December of last year of approximately $484,000. Our last graph shows the expenditures and encumbrances trend is also acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. And this concludes the presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
Anybody? Okay. We thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to our comprehensive evaluation on SchoolEggy with our presenter, Dr. Allison Bach. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Ry, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. I'm Dr. Allison Bach, Program Evaluation Specialist with the Office of Research and Evaluation. This evening, I'll provide an overview of the key findings and recommendations from the comprehensive evaluation for the SchoolEggy initiative. The evaluation report you received in your agenda materials provides additional details. SchoolEggy is a learning management system adopted by VBCPS in December 2016. The main purposes for obtaining an LMS were to provide a streamlined, user-friendly application for accessing educational content, delivering course content to students, assessing students' learning, and providing parents access to their child's work. In addition, an LMS should help facilitate the transition to personalized learning. In 2017-2018, 14 schools participated in a field test of SchoolEggy. In 2018-2019, all schools were expected to begin using SchoolEggy. The principals could determine the extent to which their teachers use the system. In 2019-2020, all schools were expected to fully utilize the system throughout the school year. The comprehensive evaluation focused on the main operational components of the LMS, progress toward goals, stakeholder perceptions, and cost. The evaluation also included actions taken regarding the year-one evaluation recommendations and information related to the school closure. Staff and students were surveyed in May during the school closure. Survey response rates are shown on the slide. In addition, a field test of parent access was conducted with four schools in January and February. Prior to the school closure, parents who accessed the division's parent portal during the field test were surveyed. Lastly, teacher, student, and parent usage data were pulled from SchoolEggy and cost data were collected. The first goal was that SchoolEggy would provide a single place for teachers to access and deliver instructional content, access and provide resources, create and administer assessments, and access and analyze assessment data for students. Regarding instructional content, nearly all secondary teachers reported they accessed and stored content in SchoolEggy for at least one course, and from 68% to 71% reported they delivered course content to students regularly. Lower percentages were found for elementary teachers. Higher percentages of secondary students who responded to the survey also reported they use SchoolEggy daily than elementary students who responded to the survey. Regarding use of resources, at least 75% of teachers at each level reported they regularly accessed and used the curriculum resources created by the Department of Teaching and Learning. Lower percentages of teachers at all levels indicated they used third-party resources or applications in SchoolEggy. Regarding assessments, higher percentages of secondary teachers reported they created and accessed data for classroom assessments than elementary teachers. In summary, overall, higher percentages of secondary teachers reported utilizing the various components of SchoolEggy than elementary teachers. During the school closure due to the COVID-19 pandemic, teachers largely relied on SchoolEggy to deliver instructional content to students. The majority of teachers and students at each school level who responded to the survey indicated their use of SchoolEggy increased during the school closure. As shown on the slide, high percentages of administrators, ITSs, and teachers at all levels agreed that SchoolEggy helped meet their instructional needs during the school closure. The second goal was that SchoolEggy would support communication and collaboration amongst teachers, administrators, students, and parents. At least 79% of administrators, ITSs, and students who responded to the survey agreed that SchoolEggy helped facilitate communication with teachers. Lower agreement percentages were found for teachers regarding communication with other teachers. In addition, at least 72% of teachers agreed that SchoolEggy helped facilitate collaboration with other teachers. Regarding communication with students, at least 80% of administrators, ITSs, and teachers at all levels agreed that SchoolEggy helped facilitate communication with students. Sorry about this slide. Of parents, I'll walk you through it. Of parents who responded to the survey and reported they accessed SchoolEggy during the field test, higher percentages of secondary parents than elementary parents reported they accessed assignments, which is the first piece, accessed course materials, the second set, and thought SchoolEggy helped them understand what their child was working on. The third goal was that SchoolEggy would be user-friendly for all users. At least 80% of all staff groups and students agreed that content in SchoolEggy was easily accessible for them. Lower percentages of parents at field test schools who responded to the survey agreed, especially at the elementary school level. Regarding the efficiency of other features in SchoolEggy, at least 71% of teachers agreed that moving curriculum resources to their courses was seamless, while higher percentages of secondary teachers indicated creating assessments was efficient. Regarding the integration of data from SchoolEggy to other platforms, survey results from Central Office implementation team members, teachers, and administrators showed the need for grades to sync from SchoolEggy to Synergy, the official gradebook of record. The fourth goal was that professional learning opportunities and support would provide teachers, administrators, and ITSs with the necessary information to utilize SchoolEggy. At least 86% of each staff group at all levels indicated the professional learning they received provided them with the necessary knowledge to use SchoolEggy. In addition, at least 88% of each staff group at all levels agree that help was available, resources were provided, and there was a timely resolution when there was an issue. Data were examined for the transformational learning outcome goal, which was that SchoolEggy would be a tool that transforms curriculum delivery. Objectives related to this goal included SchoolEggy helping students and teachers exhibit dispositions that exemplified transformational learning. At its core, transformational learning is learning that uses student-centered practices to foster student agency and provide students with the opportunity to create and apply new knowledge across contexts. Students responded to 13 survey items about SchoolEggy helping their ability to exhibit student dispositions. Representative survey items are shown on the slide. Overall, there were increases in agreement, teacher agreement percentages for all items at all levels in comparison to 2018-2019. As shown on the slide, in 2019-2020, student agreement was overall highest for elementary school students and lowest for high school students. Teachers also responded to six survey items about SchoolEggy helping their ability to exhibit teacher dispositions. Representative survey items are shown on the slide. There were increases in teacher agreement percentages for all items at all school levels in comparison to 2018-2019. As shown on the slide, in 2019-2020, overall- As shown on the slide, in 2019, 2020, overall highest agreement was found at the middle school level and lowest agreement at the elementary school level. As a reminder, these items reflected student and teacher perceptions of Schoology, facilitating various dispositions related to transformational learning. Other digital tools may also have facilitated these dispositions, which would not be reflected When asked about their overall satisfaction with Schoology, at least ninety-two percent of administrators and ninety-four percent of ITSs at each level were satisfied. For teachers, highest satisfaction was found at the secondary level and lowest satisfaction was found at the elementary level. In contrast, highest satisfaction for students was found at the elementary school level and lowest satisfaction was found at the high school level. Costs for Schoology during 2019, 2020 included the subscription fees, substitute coverage for professional learning, and payments to other vendors to ensure optimal functioning. The cost was just over four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Based on the results of the evaluation, it is recommended that the Schoology Initiative be continued with modifications. The second recommendation is to continue to communicate Schoology functionality at the elementary school level to encourage elementary school teachers to utilize the various functions of Schoology, such as delivering course content and assessment-related activities. The third recommendation is to provide elementary school parents with additional knowledge and support to access their child's academic information and work in Schoology. The fourth recommendation is to continue to work toward ensuring secondary-level grades entered in Schoology sync with Synergy. The fifth recommendation is to conduct an evaluation update during 2020, 2021 focused on parent perceptions of their access to Schoology. At this time, Dr. Sharon Schubridge, Director of Instructional Technology, will share the administration's response.
Thank you, and welcome, Dr. Schubridge.
Good evening. Thank you. The administration agrees with recommendation number one, as well as continuing to develop the use of Schoology, considering modifications noted in recommendations two through five. As part of the administration's response, I would like to take this opportunity to respond to the recommendations and share the areas we are working on strengthening. Sorry, I got, sorry, just had my slides messed up. As was shared earlier, the timeline for implementation was as follows. In 2018, 2019, all schools were expected to begin using Schoology, but principals could determine the extent to which their teachers used the system. In 2019, 2020, all schools were expected to fully utilize the system throughout the school year. Elementary principals had some flexibility with the extent to which their teachers engaged in the features of Schoology. We saw most opportunities occurring in fourth and fifth grades, with teachers anticipating the students' need for using the tool before middle school. Monthly Schoology champion trainings occurred, and schools could send their ITS, as well as identified teachers, to receive training to turn key back in their buildings. In addition, many assessments at the elementary level are anecdotal in nature, for example, listening to a student read, an open response in class, or small group conversations. When determining a student's knowledge, the content knowledge was more important than the student's ability to navigate through Schoology. In a face-to-face environment, assessing students pre-K5 is constant and not always a tangible piece of paper. With the forced closure in March, we found a variety of experiences at the elementary level with usage and comfort with the tools available in Schoology. The Instructional Technology coordinators began sharing information with Instructional Technology specialists to attempt to assist the delivery of materials and information. Based on the results of this survey, which was shared with us in June, as well as feedback from stakeholders in the spring to include teachers, parents, students, and administrators, we created a course template for all teachers to use for consistency across grade levels and schools. The template was shared with school leadership, a group of principals, Instructional Technology specialists, and teachers for feedback prior to implementing in August. In our responses to service desk tickets placed by parents this fall to assist them in navigating, this structure has made it easier to solve and resolve issues when students are remote. We do use CSAW for grades pre-K through two, and many schools also use it in grades three through five as a way to disseminate curriculum, as a way to collect student work samples, and as a way to keep parents engaged. Schoology is still where curriculum is housed. We have made an effort to align the use of Schoology K-12 with additional supports for students and teachers. In addition, we have added resources to our Instructional Technology website for teachers, as well as for ITSs to use when working with teachers. To improve our community's understanding of Schoology and how a parent can utilize the information within Schoology, I participated in two events to share the functionality. On Monday, August 31st, Family and Community Engagement hosted a Parent Connection event. During this event, I shared with parents how to use Parent View as a portal to access Schoology, and then shared with parents how to navigate within Schoology to see some of the key parts to support their students at home. In addition, the Instructional Technology team created two resource videos that are on the vbcpsupport.com website. One is a welcome message for parents, and the other identifies the difference between the parent access and the student access. I was also invited to present to the Citywide PTA on October 7th, and again, shared with these parents how to access Schoology through Parent View and the features available in Schoology that could help them navigate and support student success. Once school started, the training and communicating about features and access returned to the teachers and the Instructional Technology specialists in the building. We had a brief kickoff of grade passback at Kemsvill High School in February of 2020 that was very short-lived due to COVID shutdown and changes that it brought in terms of grading through the end of the school year. Since that time, Synergy and Schoology made upgrades to the application that resolved some issues we encountered in the initial kickoff. The field test at Kemsvill High School resumed mid-September. The grade passback application is installed for forty-five teachers, and to date, one thousand eight hundred forty assignments and thirty-six thousand six hundred thirty-six scores have been passed back. And from my perspective, that's gone very well. Given the success at Kemsvill, the field test has been expanded to Corporate Landing Middle School at the start of the second marking period in November. Maybe that was the third marking period. I'm sorry, that's all news. Sixth-grade teachers and some specialists attended the training. The application is installed for twenty-seven teachers, and they are beginning to use it. To date, twenty-seven assignments and five hundred ninety-five scores have been passed back. We have recommended the expansion of teachers at the two test schools, as well as recommended additional schools to begin term two. This concludes our presentation, and we welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Schubridge. And we'll start with Mrs. Anderson.
I appreciate all the improvements that you're trying to make with Schoology for its functionality. We heard from some teachers that they were concerned about the passback feature, and I'm so glad to hear that that is something that you're working on. It's my understanding that this grade passback feature is actually a way of syncing Schoology with Synergy, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So the teachers won't, now will not, once this is completed, they won't have to enter their grades in Schoology and then again enter it in Synergy?
That's correct.
Correct. So I just wanted to make that clear, because we did hear from somebody today, and I'm so glad to hear that you're already at the head of the curve and you're already working on this. So thank you, I appreciate that. And I know the teachers will all be thrilled to hear about that functionality, because it will save them countless hours of having to enter their grades twice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Anybody else? Okay, we appreciate all the continued efforts and the evaluation, too. Thank you. And now, Policy Review Committee recommendations. Welcome, Mrs. Lanetti.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Kami Lanetti, School Board Legal Counsel. And on behalf of the Policy Review Committee, I will be bringing you the recommendations this evening. We have two bylaws and three policies that we'll be going over. And we'll remind you, some of these may look familiar. We've been doing a lot of tweaking to the bylaws as we've been working through a protocol manual. We've been trying to update both of them. The first one up is bylaw 136. 136 has to do with open and closed meetings for the school board. A significant change has happened, first in Section B, enclosed meetings. We've added a section under B1, which explains the procedure you're to follow if you want to challenge a certification or a motion to go into closed session. It's been in the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. It's not always been clear in our bylaws. We've gone ahead and added the procedure here in B1. Under B3, we've added clarification on the confidentiality of closed meetings and the responsibilities of school board members to maintain the confidentiality of information that they receive in closed session. Under Section C, this has to do with electronic communication meetings. This was not something we dealt a lot with before this year. It has now become more common, and it's come to my attention while we're doing this, that we needed to clarify some of the procedures in here. One of the first things we added under this section had to do with Section 3, with the reasons you could go into electronic meetings. Prior to the pandemic and the governor's additions to the budget bills from the General Assembly last year, you were not authorized to go into an electronic meeting for anything other than an emergency circumstance, and only then for the purposes of dealing with that emergency. Clearly, you're not able to override under that. That will expire when the budget amendment expires this year unless the General Assembly makes changes. However, they could put out others. So we have put out a subsection 3 that has, under other conditions that are allowed by the Governor of Virginia, General Assembly, and adopted by the school board, will allow you to do electronic meetings, so if those things change in the future. Also, we've gone a little bit further in Section C, that you may also follow the same committees for electronic meetings when you have school board committees. You have a significant amount of committees. You might want to make clear that the committees could also function under these electronic meetings. You'll see a very extensive change. It's not really changed, but a better explanation, under remote location participation. Electronic meetings happen when you have more than a quorum of the school board is not located in one location, or if you have to, along these current circumstances we have with the pandemic, you have to have a combination of people in here, and the public cannot come into the meeting. In most cases, your meetings have to be open to the public. Under these circumstances, with the safety restrictions, we cannot add any more people to this room, so it is technically electronic meetings. But there's a difference between electronic meeting and participating remotely. Currently, you have some school board members that are participating remotely. There are limitations generally when someone can participate remotely in a meeting. Right now, we have Zoom. In the past, we've had telephone participation. What we've done is clarify some information here. So Subsection D has to do with remote location participation. There are two different areas. This is actually not new to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. It was something you chose about 2014 when you added in the remote participation procedures into your bylaws. You did not authorize some of these areas, but this time, you've gone ahead and we've made the recommendation to separate out the different types of remote participation. And the first one is in Subsection 1. It has to do with temporary or permanent disability or other medical condition that prevents physical attendance. You are now going to allow unlimited amounts of participation meetings if you have a permanent disability or medical condition. The procedures layout for that explains how you explain, how you go into the procedures. We did build in an exception if it becomes disruptive to the school board meeting or to the school board committee meeting, you could then move to not allow the person to participate indefinitely on medical leave. The second area has to do with personal matter, a physical tenant. So if you choose to go on vacation, you choose to take a day off, and you want to participate, you are actually technically limited to two meetings a year for that. So we clarified that. It's not clear before, but you can do two meetings for the school board remotely for personal use and two per committee. So if you serve a multiple committees, you can take that. We've gone ahead and explained that particular procedure here and how you have to explain it to them and how you have to note it in the notes. So that's all in addition to this information we haven't had in there before. There's a minor changes that have to do with the appropriate participation, how we choose. If you choose to do by Zoom, but we don't have Zoom capability for that meeting, the school board or the committee can determine it has to be by telephone. Those changes have been noted in there. Again, not a significant change for us, but a better clarification for that came out of some discussions we had at the governance committee on that. Are there any questions on that particular bylaw? A lot of information, but really just a better clarification. Bylaw 138 has to do with irregular meetings, time and place, order of business, recessed meetings, and work session public hearing. If you take a look down on Subsection E, we have added a section that says decisions regarding how school board meetings are conducted. This particular section reads, "When school board bylaws, policies, regulations, or applicable law or regulation do not adequately address how school board meetings are conducted or when insufficient time is available for the school board as a whole to take action before such meeting, the chair, clerk, or superintendent or the adjutantees are authorized to make reasonable and necessary decisions regarding how such meetings are to be prepared and conducted." You saw a similar bylaw that came at the last school board meeting. This is just clarifying. It doesn't necessarily change major issues, but sometimes you have to move rooms, you may have to go immediately to go electronic because there was an emergency circumstance. If there's not time for all of you to gather to vote, this bylaw is going to allow the chair, the superintendent, or the clerk to help make those final decisions. Again, a major decision, the school would be able to make, or you could override a decision. This is just authorization to make some of those necessary changes. This has come up a lot during the last couple of months. We need to clarify who has authority to do that. Are there any questions on bylaw 138? Hearing no questions, I will move on to policy 259. Policy 259 has to do with outside legal counsel. The first section deals with when we need to hire outside legal counsel for you because there's a conflict or something that my office cannot handle for you. We didn't make changes to that particular section. We did make significant changes to Section B. The Code of Virginia allows you to authorize reimbursement of legal fees for employees who, when performing their duties, encounter certain types of criminal offenses. Normal civil offenses are generally covered by your risk management, but a criminal offense would not be covered by your risk management policies. It had a slightly different procedure, another issue came up earlier this fall we had to deal with, and we've gone through and clarified the procedure. Now, this current procedure, an individual employee who, in the course of performing their duties, has to defend themselves in a lawsuit relevant to those duties after the lawsuit is finished, if it turns out that they have been null-passed, dismissed, or the case has otherwise gone away, they are allowed to come back to you, show you that information, and ask for you to have reimbursed. The difference this time is that we've sent the procedure, will now go to the superintendent's office. The superintendent's office will prepare the documentation and make a recommendation to you as to whether or not they are recommending that the school board go ahead and pay these fees. Certain documentation has to be included with that. It then comes to the school board. Again, it's always discretionary with the school board as to whether you're going to pay, reimburse an employee for their fees. The difference here will be also at that time, rather than my office making a determination as to whether it should be paid, you can consult me as to whether it's an appropriate fee and information on it, and then we can have that discussion in closed session, and the final determination comes to you. It's a significantly longer procedure on there, but I think it's a little bit clearer. And this came out of another case we had a few months ago that we had to deal with. Are there any questions about this particular policy? Moving on to policy 417. These are recommendations coming out of the Human Resources Department. This has to do with suspension from work or administrative leave. We've been clarifying some of the procedures here. We're clarifying the difference right now between suspensions without pay for disciplinary reasons, Subsection D is administrative leave with pay, and then we're changing administrative leave without pay. We're basically changing the titles in this area and talking about administrative leave, because it's not always been clear when we've used this. In other policies with certain employers, we've had this clarified. This policy is simply clarifying the titles to be consistent with other policies. Are there any questions about policy 417? Hearing no questions on policy 417, I will move on to our final policy, which is policy 439, Employee Professional Development and Growth in Job Skills. This did not have significant changes to it. What we did add to it was Section D having to do with trainings. The General Assembly passed a law this summer that required that the school board ensure that all employees are trained on mental health awareness and other required trainings. It did actually require that you adopt a policy ensuring that they have it. This is how we normally do it. This is normally a regulation or requirement. In this case, the General Assembly's new law did require that you have a policy. So we've incorporated into this section that the superintendent adjutantees will establish the training for teachers, employees, involving mental health awareness training and other required trainings. Again, not typically where we would put in our policy and regulations, but did need to be in the policies to be implemented. At this time, those are all the recommendations coming out of the Policy Review Committee. Are there any further questions I can answer? Thank you.
All right, thank you. That brings us to the final information item of the evening, 2021 Plan Updates. Welcome, Dr. Robertson. And for the benefit of the viewing public who may not have observed the workshop earlier this afternoon, we had three, we had representatives from our local medical advisory panel, as well as Dr. Lindsay, our... well as Dr. Lindsay, our public health official. So with that, welcome, Dr. Robertson.
Yes, so good evening, Chairwoman Rye, members of the board and Dr. Spence. My presentation tonight will be the extension of what was shared earlier. So this is information you have not had a chance to look at yet. And I'll wait for the... Okay. All right. So, Regina, I can go ahead. Yep, thanks. So you see the agenda on the screen, and this is the items I'm going to focus on tonight. And of course, at the end, we'll take questions related to anything you hear in this item or anything that was left unanswered from the workshop. So as we all know, students are currently learning remotely, and as a result, all activities and progress are only occurring virtually. And this will continue until further notice. Dr. Spence approved of continuing to pay all middle school and high school coaches their supplement this year, whether we are able to have a season or not. Coaches have been preparing their teams through preseason conditioning and continue to remain in touch with their prospective student athletes to monitor progress in the classroom. In short, coaches are continuing to work in this capacity. Our varsity athletes and families are well aware that we are on hold now as a result of continuing health metrics in the red, red zone. They know we must have at least one metric in yellow to trigger our seven-day countdown of consecutive yellow necessary to start the season. Currently, we have lost eight practice days in an already compressed winter season, and today's metrics are at 11.5% in 679 cases. In terms of moving forward of winter sports at the varsity level, we have watched our neighboring school divisions' progress. Just today, as an example, Chesapeake, who had started practices on December 7th, are pausing all practices until the week of January 4th, when the division will determine whether to continue with varsity athletics. In consultation with my team and after reviewing the Virginia High School, Virginia High School League deadlines for postseason consideration, we are recommending that if we do not have at least one metric in the yellow on Tuesday, December 22nd, that we cancel the winter season. We base this date on the fact that the last day we could begin tryouts is on Monday, January 4th, which would mean we must eliminate another week of scheduled competitions to meet the Virginia High School League requirement of practice dates before competition. Hence, we would have a shortened four-week competition season. We also know that if our metrics are not solidly in the red, are still solidly in the red, mathematically, it is unrealistic to expect a return to yellow over the next two weeks leading up to January 4th. Therefore, we request this timeline be approved by the school board. The information on this slide is very similar to the information I shared a few weeks ago, and I want to go over that with you again because I did hear some speakers tonight comment on this. We have decided we are asking all students and families to continue in the learning environment they chose in August. That environment was chosen for at least the first semester. We also want to recognize that circumstances change. So students and families who wish to change their learning environment must contact the school principal on or before Friday, December 18th. This is Friday. Just as an update to you, we have received a handful of requests from each school for parents expressing a wish to change, and it is overwhelmingly a change to virtual. Schools will continue and will work to honor changes in January as they develop student schedules to prepare for Term 2 at middle school and high school and second semester for elementary. We can't guarantee these moves because, as always, depending on what our plan is when we go back, we have to have seats available to allow any family who was virtual and now wants to be in person, we've got to have space for them. So none of those requests are guaranteed. We're going to do the very best we can. So far, we've, we've made good progress. The secondary central virtual learning center is going to continue and could be expanded based on student and school needs. As you've heard, this has been a very successful venture. And families will be notified by Wednesday, January 27th of their Term 2 or second semester option placement. The reason for this date is we will be doing course scheduling and addressing any student failures from Term 1 during that same time period. But by Wednesday, the 27th, which gives us one, which will give parents one week notice, will know where everyone is going to be. As a reminder, divisions are held accountable under two different systems, state accreditation and federal accountability. As you know, state accreditation for the 2021-22 school year, which is based on data during the current year, has been waived by the Virginia Department of Education. The assessment requirements under the federal accountability system outlined in the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA, have not been waived by the United States Department of Education. Therefore, we are required to offer SOL testing to students. Because our division is on a four-by-four schedule for secondary schools, SOL testing for our secondary school students is fast approaching. As we wrap up this term, the secondary students finishing a course with an associated SOL test are to be offered the opportunity to take the SOL test. This administration is proposing that SOL test be offered in January even if the metrics are in red. Although we could wait and assess these students in the spring, we feel strongly that students should have the opportunity in January at the end of their course and not have to wait to test months after instruction is ended. We're also confident that we can create a plan to limit the number of students coming in for a test that would ensure the health and safety protocols are in place and everyone can test safely. SOL tests must be administered in person. I'll say that again, SOL tests must be administered in person and not in a virtual environment. Families may choose for their students to participate or not. Groups of students enrolled in SOL courses will be invited into school each day over several days, again, based on health and safety mitigations, to take the various assessments. Tomorrow, Option 1 and Option 2 families with students in grades 6 through 12 will receive a survey informing them of their SOL testing opportunities. Option 1 families will be asked if they want their student to come into school in person to test if the division is in a virtual-only learning environment. If the division is back to a hybrid mode of learning, as we were for a couple of days in November, this group of students will test on the days they are already scheduled to be in school. Option 2 families will be asked if they're, if they want their student to come to school in person over some selected days we've identified for Option 2 students. The survey they will get tomorrow also includes asking families of all grade 11 students if they wish to come into school on January 26th to take the PSAT or MSCAP. Any students who choose not to participate in testing this January may participate in SOL testing this spring and in some cases, over the summer. Students trying to earn a verified credit can participate in SOL testing during any of the test administrations in the future so they can earn the verified credit they need to graduate. In late November, a few waivers and emergency guidance was approved by the State Superintendent, Board of Education and the Secretary of Education in response to the challenges presented by the COVID-19 pandemic. In some cases, Virginia Beach will take advantage of the offered flexibility, and in some cases, we cannot. In lieu of some SOL tests, divisions are permitted to administer local alternative assessments instead. At this point, our schools are on track for a local alternative assessment in grade 8 writing. In regard to a grade 5 Virginia Studies local alternative assessment, we are currently working to collect additional information on the reporting requirements from the Virginia Department of Education before we make any final decisions. After much discussion, and because we are nearing the end of the first term in our four-by-four schedule, it was determined that there is not the time needed to prepare teachers to administer and score a local alternative assessment for grade 8 civics and economics or for the high school history, social science courses. Therefore, students in these courses will be offered the SOL test instead of a local alternative assessment. Because Virginia Beach Public Schools is not currently assessing high school students in writing with locally developed performance assessments for verified credit, the offered flexibility is not applicable for our division and has no impact on the division's process. Students enrolled in grade 11 English will participate in a writing SOL test. Flexibility is also being offered as it relates to locally awarded verified credits for students taking a high school course. School divisions may award a locally awarded verified credit to students enrolled in a reading, writing, mathematics, history, social science or science course during the fall 2020 semester if they do three things. One, meet local criteria for course achievement. Two, take the SOL test at least once. And three, achieve a score within a modified range between 350 and 399 on the associated end-of-course SOL test. A locally awarded verified credit earned this fall will not count towards the cap of the number of locally awarded verified credits permitted for a student. Previously, a student would need to have attempted the test twice and score within a range between 375 and 399. It's now 350 to 399. The locally awarded verified credit process will be followed per the board's guidelines in order to award these credits as permitted. And this locally awarded verified credit flexibility is only available right now for students enrolled in the current term. And at this point, the Virginia Department of Education has not been able to confirm if the same flexibility will be available to students enrolled in Term 2. So you guys know, you loved me when I gave you all this stuff years back. It's muddy, and it makes a lot of sense, right? Got to read it like five times. Trust me, we got this, though. Although it's recommended that students take any required SOL test at the end of the associated course, the Virginia Department of Education is permitting students to waive certain end-of-course tests if they are taking a course in a future year that can provide the required verified credit. The following situations outline when a test can be waived for a future test. I'm not going to read all of these, but I'll read the first one to give you the gist. Students in grade nine or 10 enrolled in earth science may waive the SOL test in earth science if they enroll in biology during a future year and take the biology test. Now, look, we know those kids are going to take biology. So they can decide, I feel really good, I want to take my earth science now, or not so much, I'm going to wait because I'm going to take biology next year and I'll take the biology test. They would be able to do that this year. The next examples here, related to Algebra I and Geometry. Here's one related to history. And then finally, a middle school example because we don't want to leave them out. There are no available test waivers for end-of-course reading, writing, Algebra I or biology as they were, they're the ones that are required under the Every Student Succeeds Act. For school year 2021, that's this year, we are not offering final assessments or exams in secondary courses. Under normal circumstances, final assessments count one-ninth of a term grade and can include a traditionally timed assessment or an extended learning assessment. In addition, based on performance on the SOL test or current average, and of course, students could opt out of the final. This year, term grades will be calculated based on the average of the four marking periods in each term. We believe that by using the division benchmark assessments, we can monitor and assess progress on key standards of learning objectives. My team is doing that right now in the school support process meetings that we're holding with all of our schools. We are looking at local benchmark assessments and assessments we use like PALS, like the reading inventory and things like that to target support. We know teachers more than ever are spiraling their curriculum to address learning loss and the challenges of learning in a pandemic, where it used to be that some teachers spiraled or in some courses it made sense to spiral, which you, you continue to move forward and go back, move forward and go back, move forward and go back. Teachers are regularly doing that now. We had to push the SOL assessments back. They were scheduled in December, some of them, and some of them in early January. We've had to relook at that window based on where we are and push that window back as far as we could, can during the first term. And now that runs right in line with when the exams would be. So you could technically have a student taking an SOL test on a Wednesday and a final assessment on a Thursday. And then we believe that by, for this year only, not offering the final assessments, it's going to maximize instructional time and pull something off teacher plates, student plates as well. Much like the school board is entering budget season, schools must begin to prepare now for school year 21-22. In the fall, Dr. Spence was asked if the emergency move to a four-by-four at the secondary level would become the default for 21-22, and he unequivocally stated it would not. Instead, we would monitor progress and proceed accordingly. Therefore, we have directed schools to prepare for a return to the scheduling model in place to begin the 2019-20 school year. This includes the middle school model and the AB at high school. We will also, however, leverage our learning this year to consider what other options that have served our students and families so well can be used in some capacity next year. These include four-by-four classes, online and virtual options that helped us extend opportunities to students and families to access learning. Know that we are planning to engage the school board in a presentation in their July retreat on potential flexible scheduling options for 2022-2023. So in July, we want to engage you in a process, get your thinking so that we have the fall to go through a formal process if we want to do anything different with our schedule in 2022-23. Right now, for next year, we are operating under the premise, we are going back to the schedules we were in, the scheduling models we were using from last school year. Finally, due to the overwhelming success of our secondary VLC, we're planning to offer this again in some capacity and more to come on this as we work these things out. In terms of next steps, marking period 3 ends tomorrow. We'll be conducting an analysis of student progress as we have after each of the first two marking periods. If you recall, I've presented that analysis to you. I'll do so again in January. We will continue to monitor health data as it relates to beginning the winter varsity season, as shared earlier. Recall, we are asking that Monday, or I'm sorry, Tuesday, December 22nd, if we don't have a metric in the yellow, we are asking for the board's approval to cancel the winter season. We will also continue to monitor those metrics because we'll have to make some decisions in January, middle of January, related to middle school season 2, which includes wrestling, volleyball and debate. And at the end of January, we'll have to make some decisions about high school fall sports. In each case, our decision will be based on current health metrics and on our ability to provide the safest environment for our students and staff. And this concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. Before we get into more questions, I guess it's a Dr. Spence question. Are any of the doctors available by phone at this time? One colleague has mentioned it could be a future follow-up question, but just thought we'd ask.
No, ma'am. I think it'd be helpful if you could just send that question to me for follow-up, and I'll get, I'll get whoever has that response.
Thank you. All right, we'll start things off with Mrs. Anderson.
Chairwoman Rye, can you just please add Ms. Williams to the queue?
Okay. And Mr. Edwards.
So I just want to be clear because you did present a lot of information.
Yes.
So it's my understanding, so maybe I'm wrong on this, but you are not planning for next year at this time for a four-by-four model?
We are not. Our, our, our direction to schools at the secondary level, high school, would be you're going to work with the same scheduling model that you would have used a year ago, which is the AB model. We'll, we'll also, though, look at what are those things that we learn that we could leverage to better meet student needs. We've had some success with virtual learning options for students. We believe we can capture our homeschool students by providing a robust online model for those families. And we don't want to lose that. But we are proceeding to go back to the AB per Dr. Spence's comments he made months ago.
Okay, so that's what you were talking about, you possibly will be presenting as a flexible, flexible type option?
And that would be for your consideration in July to retreat for the 2022, 23 school year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Edwards.
This is a question for Dr. Spence. If we don't take any action other than the one that's already been suggested regarding the winter sports, will the staff be prepared to do anything different in January other than follow the existing plan?
No, and I'm not sure you should take any action tonight regardless because I don't have a plan to put in front of you to take action on. I think, no, I think, I know. Our intention this evening was to kind of understand the, to hear the discussion with you, to hear the questions that you have, and then to then take that back. We have a team meeting on Thursday to have further conversation and then to be able to talk about a plan moving forward. I think we have some time. I think we do. Based on some things that I heard this evening and then thinking about the kind of post-holiday incubation period, I think we've got a little bit of time in order to put a plan together. But what I would propose is if you give me till Thursday to meet with my team, I can put a memo to the board out, just to begin to articulate our thinking and then we can discuss with the chair how we move forward from there. I just, I mean, you could take action tonight, but I don't have anything for you to take action on specifically, not there. There are things we have to prepare for if we were going to begin phasing students back in, I think is your question. And we're not, I'm not prepared to tell you what that looks like.
Yeah. I hate to say the holidays are a bummer from a scheduling standpoint. I mean, we're not talking, you know, we're talking about nothing happening for four weeks. I'm disappointed, but I don't have an alternative, so.
I, I understand, and nor do I. I mean, the, the, the good news, if there's good news in that, is that we're a week away from moving to the holidays and then we'll be out for a bit. So many, most of those weeks are not instructional.
Yeah, true. Mrs. Williams, are you with us?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I guess I'll just plug this in for my colleagues to contemplate, like, since Dan kind of brought it up. Yeah, I was looking at my calendar a few minutes ago and our next meeting is January twelfth. That's a month from now. So I would like to maybe see if we can meet before that, maybe for later discussion. So, but Dr. Robertson, so you said a handful from each school have already, I guess, contacted the principal or sent in their form about changing their choice. Is that what you said correct?
Yes, it's not a form. It could be just an email. And I don't have numbers, Ms. Williams, but the largest number I heard was twenty at a particular high school.
Okay, because when you said a handful from each, I mean, assuming we have approximately eighty-five, something eighty-six schools, and if you just put five there, you know, you're looking at four hundred changes and you said the majority was virtual. Like, do you think it's like as high as seventy-five percent?
I would say that's accurate.
Okay, so my question is, so if we, I mean, that's, that's a good, you know, hunk of students now deciding to change to go virtual. So I guess my question is, are we going to have enough staff to do the virtual first part? Second part, as, as parents and families have this choice, do teachers get this choice also? Example, a teacher called me and said she would love to change her choice from virtual to face-to-face. Seeing those numbers, I, I, that's probably problematic. But so, so are we going to have enough staff to teach virtual? And do teachers have a choice, as do our families?
So we will have enough staff because we have enough staff now. So whether we configure those staff with more in the face-to-face environment than virtual or whether they're more in the virtual environment than face-to-face, we have enough staff. We are not going back to survey staff on any potential preference changes they have. We'll continue to work with staff, as we have, based upon their own medical needs to determine whether it is safer for them to teach in the virtual environment than in the face-to-face environment. And as always, if a staff member feels that they would rather teach in the face-to-face environment and we have room for them to teach in the face-to-face environment without moving anyone out, then we would absolutely do that at the school level.
Okay, so they would just need to contact their, his or her principal?
That's correct.
And make that request known?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owens.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what we're talking about with the submitting a plan and making decisions for January. Are we saying that a plan for returning students face-to-face at any percentage mark that we hit, that they can just be face-to-face and not have a opportunity for families to then go and change their, their selection? Because I heard the eighteenth is what we're trying to get people to change their selection by, or if they need to change it. We are encouraging them to stay where they're at. But if whatever fits their family best, we're asking them to do it by the eighteenth without telling them what the metric will be. And then after the eighteenth, perhaps we send them in at twenty percent positivity? And, I mean, I just want to make sure, because I'm confused.
And I'll allow Dr. Spence to weigh in, but I think I heard two questions there. And one is, and I believe he has said that when his team meets, that's when it'll be determined whatever proposal comes out of that meeting. The second question, and I think it's a question a number of us have, is since this would not, there would be no meeting till January. So I guess, Dr. Robertson, I think I know what the answer is going to be. But for parents who, this is the December eighteenth deadline. And so if there is any change come January, it's, the answer, I'm guessing, is going to be subject to availability on if you want to change at that point. But you.
Yeah, so I'll, 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 I'll take that, right? So I don't want to do too much sort of putting the cart before the horse here, right? So I think that matters. And if we were, let's use the example, you all asked me earlier what I thought we should do, where my head was. And I told you, I think, pretty clearly where my head is, is that we should be began thinking about how to phase students back in. And if we were to do that in a way that made families uncomfortable and those families wanted to explain that to us, we, I mean, the, so for example, right now, okay, you've got teachers who are teaching concurrently. So they've got, and this is primarily secondary. So if they've got students who are in their classroom now, face-to-face, and that student wants to be virtual, that's not going to be a problem. I mean, we can work through most of that. Now, there'll be some scheduling issues and we'll have to sort through that, but mostly we can work through that. And then we'll have to tackle that similarly at the elementary level. But that's a conversation I have to have with my team before we can sort out the answer to that question. Which is why I said I'm not really prepared for you to take any sort of action on that tonight because we got to think down, we got to think through those, those complications.
And, and Ms. Roth, if I could explain December eighteenth and the selection of that date. If you recall, we, we, in, in August, we gave schools ten days to create a schedule from scratch. That challenge is doubly difficult now because we're already into a current schedule. And because the schedule breaks at the end of January, we will have some students, although students are doing well right now based upon our first two marking periods, we will have some students who don't pass a class in Term One. And we're going to want to make sure we provide them the best opportunities, which is why we are looking at some really exciting things that I don't want to share with you yet on how we can use the VLC to meet those students' needs right now so it takes off, takes summer school off their plate. I cannot in good conscience turn things around on my schools again and say, you've got ten days to recreate these schedules.
I can't blame you for not wanting to repeat that.
Yeah, but we also feel confident that the conversations that we've had at schools with parents, for the most part, have gone well. We do have some families who want to be in that are on wait lists, but those wait lists are few and far between. We also have had some great conversations at elementary schools between parents and administrators about what would it mean if I moved? Well, let's see, if you move into a different setting, so let's, cards on the table, that could mean that your child is in a different setting with a different teacher, a different small group outfit. Kids are, at the elementary level, they are really comfortable for the most part where they are. And they know where their small groups are. The teachers know where their strengths and deficits are. They're able to target those things. And any potential shifts could change that dynamic. And so those conversations are occurring right now on a daily basis between families and principals.
So I appreciate that Dr. Spence reminded me and that, about the concurrent teaching. So I, I unders, that certainly makes things more seamless. But can you give us an example, is it possible a student who would wind up in the VLC who's not there now and under what circumstance?
Certainly, it could be that a kid is, is selecting a course that they're scheduled into Term Two where just by the nature of the configuration of who selected what in that school and how many teachers they have, there's a number of extra kids. Well, there's a number of extra kids in nine schools. So we put those extra kids together and they take a virtual class in the VLC. The beauty is, if they're attending in person, they can, they, they can participate in that VLC class in person, sitting in a classroom like they did at Landstone High School when you saw in the video. They have, they've utilized their library setting for any kids that are taking those online courses to sit in the library and interact in their online environment and walk down the hall for the next block and get something face-to-face.
So you just answered my question. So you can be like a part-time VLC student?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you. I had a lot of questions from earlier and I didn't get a chance to ask them earlier, but I eliminated most of those because they, my, my colleagues actually answered a lot of them or asked a lot of the questions and so most of them were, were answered. But first thing I want to say for those parents that are listening is I'm one of those people who desperately want our students back in school. And I think I could probably speak for everybody on this board. We all want to be, all this to be over with. We all want our students back in school because we all know that that's the best place that they learn. But I'm also one of those people who wants to do it safely. And so I just want to make it clear that my position on this is that we have to think about the availability of staff, how this affects them. And, and so we heard over and over and over again from Dr. Lindsay. We, she continued to say over and over that we needed to do so with caution. And she, she warned us about the, the, the risks to staff, the level of the community transmission. All of those things she felt like, you know, have to be taken into consideration. And she felt like the level of community transmission was, when you think about that, that's something that teachers can be bringing into the building from the community. So we have to consider those things. And we need, and she continued to say we need to proceed with caution. So I just want to leave it at that and just say that I, I, I know that when you meet with your team this week, that that will be the message that you all follow as well, to proceed with caution. And, and I like the fact that she, she felt like opening in phases, proceeding with caution was the way to do it. Not immediately bringing everybody back at one point in time, but, but opening in phases might be a, a position we might be willing to go for. So just wanted to leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, any Ms. Ms. Owens and Madam Chair, keep us posted, please, on Zoom requests.
Okay, I had a couple of things that are mainly comments. You may have a question. I wanted to thank Dr. Spence for conversations that we were able to have this past week. I felt like we, like I really got a better understanding of some of the things that he's working on. And some of the things provided me some, some comfort of where we're going. And it's not a diff, it's not an easy place for us to go. And I think we're all on the same page with that. Depending on, you know, where we get and how we get there. We know it's not going to be easy. I, I want to thank Mary Shaw for providing the numbers that I had been asking for on additional COVID-positive cases in an email. I wanted to make sure that I said that because we had been in meetings before and I had said that she hadn't. So I wanted to make sure that I gave that credit where it was due. The numbers that we received this past week from Mary and Dr. Spence had additional information about exposures in addition to the COVID-positive situations. And I, I appreciated that and I hope that that will continue because I feel like it helps give additional context to what, what we're looking at. The safety groups that you're looking at implementing, I think, is ideal. And I want to be on record because I had been pushing for the anonymous reporting. And I do feel like this captures what, what I was looking for to happen with the anonymous reporting and takes it up a notch with accountability. And so I would be very much in support of that. And I, I can stop pushing for the anonymous once we see this implemented because I think it is important for personnel to have the ability to report to somebody that's not in the direct line of chain of command, although we encourage that and we encourage those relationships, that there is an alternative in a different office that is meant to manage that, and I think that's a positive. And the other thing that I was able to talk with Dr. Spence about and receive his support from is that I'd like to see a mental health task force compiled for our district administratively, where we have directors or different staff members from the counseling department, from the social work department, liaisons from our board, and some community supports from mental health positions in our community coming together to look at the services that we are providing, where we're doing well, where we need to pick up and how we can do better to continue to serve our students virtually and in person with our mental health needs that we have in our division. Every meeting, we come in here and we hear about the mental health needs and we know that they exist. But I think it's, it's helpful not only to have pediatricians come and talk about mental health, but to have mental health experts come in and take us to the next level that we should be in providing our students the best services that we can. And to, to be able to self-critique and look at where our district is and what else we need to do with that. And so I am hopeful that that's something that can continue to evolve and be developed so that we can sometime in the new year hear more about it from administration and move forward with that really important piece of, of the puzzle that we're talking about when we're talking about reopening or continuing virtual or doing both simultaneously. I understand that we have special needs students who are not able to learn effectively virtually. who are not able to learn effectively virtually. That there's no way kind of around that or to pretend that that's not a, a thing, that we, that is a, an issue and we do need to address it. And that may mean having special education students coming in at higher metrics than what we originally agreed upon. And that's something that I'm open to having continued discussions about, uh, particularly once we know that we have, like, the safety teams and, and those other, um, aspects kind of built in and to start, uh, starting there and proceed cautiously and seeing how that goes. Um, I know that we'll eventually vote and see where everybody else feels about where we start and how quick we move on, on different things. I am concerned that we do it while our numbers are still rising. That, that still gives me pause and hesitation and I know we'll have more time to discuss it with more information. Maybe by the twelfth, when we come back, we'll have stabilized in our red and we'll be in a different place. Um, but I was hoping that, uh, Dr. Spence, if you felt comfortable, saying anything about the possibility of the mental health task force. And, um, I know it was something that, yeah, that I brought up to you, but that was not a new thought to you as far as, um, how we can better utilize and move our services forward.
Right, n- not a new thought in as much as, so y- you all know we have an outstanding staff in student support services and, and, and they're doing some work. In fact, a little bit later today in closed session, you'll get a little bit of an update on some of the work that we're doing relative to our partnerships with mental health providers in the community. And, um, a- and so, you know, w- w- I think, uh, and I discussed this briefly with, with a few members of the staff there, um, I think a task force that sort of puts a public face on that, on those conversations and allows us to kind of have that dialogue with our community and with the board, I, I think would certainly be appropriate. Uh, and I would just, uh, ask for, not before the holidays. When we get back after the holidays, maybe I'll convene staff and we'll, um, sort of figure out who might liaise to that from our perspective and, um, both staffing and then some of the current partners that we're working with. And then we can have a conversation with you all about who and when you might want to, um, have join, join us on that task force, which would not be dissimilar from what we've done, for example, with the student discipline task force or what we do as strategic planning committee. So, you know, they're administrative committees, but you all send liaisons to them to help inform our thinking. So I would certainly, or, or Equity Council. So I would certainly encourage those, uh, uh, dialogue to continue, but I'm just gonna ask for a little patience to not do that right away, but give us a moment to get ourselves squared away on this other conversation, uh, first, if we could.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Owens. And, and Ms. Owens and I had the opportunity to, to talk about that as well, so I appreciate your outreach to me as well. Uh, is, I almost feel before you leave, though, that the athletics bears just a little more attention. If you could just reiterate that once again?
Yeah, so, um, right now, we have lost eight days of practice because we're in the red-red. Uh, we have always taken a stance with the coaches and, and we've, we've informed the parents that, uh, until we go yellow-red, um, the clock doesn't start ticking. And then once we go yellow-red, we need seven consecutive days in yellow-red to start tryouts. And looking at some regional deadlines and our already shortened schedule, we've determined that January fourth is the absolute last day where we could start tryouts. And then there's a required number of days of practice before your competition. So, meaning we couldn't play our first game until January fifteenth. We've already pushed our schedule back from December twenty-first start of games to January eighth start of games. We would then have to push those games back another week. So we would in essence be looking at a four-week s- winter sports calendar. Because we're gonna be at break, um, if you go back seven days from January fourth, we really feel like, you know, I, with my math background, um, if, if our metrics are wh- where they are, uh, mathematically, it's, it's almost impossible to have those numbers drop to a yellow-red within less than fourteen days. So when we look at Tuesday, December twenty-second, that's the last day we're in school. That gives us the opportunity to look at the metrics on that day. And if they are not in a, i- in a yellow-red situation, we would recommend that winter sports be canceled. And, and, and Madam Chair, currently, as of, uh, Monday, one hundred and seventy-five schools from fifty-five school divisions had canceled their winter season. And another hundred and forty-three s- schools were on pause. So everybody is in a very difficult spot right now. We recognize how important athletics are to our, to our students, but...
So that's a definite trend. What is the VHSL saying at this point?
Um, they are going to support any of the school divisions that try to, to play. They've, they've provided guidelines, much like the...
The gov- like the governor's guidelines.
Yes.
Where it's still up to ultimately every s- s- school division and school board and superintendent.
Can you elaborate on what happened with Chesapeake, with, what they did last night?
It's my understanding that Chesapeake, uh, paused practices last week and then had a, um, a board meeting last night. And in that meeting, um, announced that, uh, they were gonna be virtual learning the first two weeks after January fourth, that athletics had been paused u- until January fourth. And then the week of January fourth, I don't know the Chesapeake's board's schedule. It seems that maybe they have a meeting on the fourth, I don't know. But they're gonna notify schools the week of the fourth on whether or not winter sports will, will resume. But again, this, I don't wanna speak for Chesapeake, this is the best understanding that I have.
Thank you. I, I, I heard it briefly last night, too, on the news and I was confused about it as well. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions on this information agenda? I don't, it's, all very valuable. I think we've made good progress today. Thank you very much.
Unless, do you wish to, do you wish to?
Point of order. Dr. Spence, did you expect us to take action on, on his recommendation tonight about the sports?
No, ma'am, and I apologize. I think that was a little, um, miscommunication between Dr. Robertson and I, but it's a good conversation for us to have very quickly. Um, I don't believe the board's required to take action on athletics, it's generally an administrative decision. Um, if you want to affirm that, you could have a conversation affirming, but generally, it's not something you would vote on. I- it's just something that we wanna make sure you're aware of, uh, for information purposes, uh, so that you're not surprised if and when we have to, uh, communicate with our families about what's happening next.
All right then, uh, Standing Committee reports. Mr. Edwards?
The Audit Committee will meet this Thursday, uh, at one o'clock. Um, and it will be a virtual meeting. Um, and we will be receiving a, uh, briefing from the, uh, external auditor on the, uh, the, the major external audit of the school division that was completed for the year ending this past June. That, that information will flow to the board, um, in terms of the, uh, you all will be receiving probably next month, the CAFRA, you know, that really big book that has all kinds of, it's got a lot of really good information in it. So, uh, look for it. Um, and, uh, beyond that, though, that is about it. Uh, and there's no other major issues on our agenda for, for this week, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm Ms. Owens, and then Mrs. Holtz?
Okay, um, just a, a brief update from Equity Council. Uh, myself and, uh, Ms. Felton attended, uh, last Thursday. Um, the Equity Council, uh, recognized a, a few, uh, things for the month of December. December is National Human Rights Month. Uh, December seventh through eleventh was Inclusive Schools Network Week. Um, and the, uh, meeting, we, uh, got updates from Mary Dees about the discipline guidelines and code of conduct. Um, and members are reviewing that for additional input. Um, and also we got a presentation from, uh, Mr. DiMartini, uh, from the Office of Safe Schools in regards to the memorandum of understanding with our SROs. And, um, it was a, it was a good presentation and conversation and, uh, the council is, uh, submitting additional questions and, uh, conversation, uh, to Dr. Parrott and Dr. Mar- uh, Martini, to, DiMartini, to, um, kind of continue any, uh, feedback and building off of that. Um, we had remarks from student, uh, representatives and, uh, did I miss anything that we went over, Sharon? Okay, and so then we'll be meeting again in January.
Please.
Madam Chair, I hope this is in order. I just wanna report on, um, a piece of legislative that the Virginia Beach Public School legislated and, and with our consent, was passed on to VSBA. And the title of that, uh, particular legislative, uh, policy was Twenty-First Century Community, Communication for School Boards. And it was overly, warmly supported by the VSBA. We had a few questions from the, um, audience concerning, the main question was, had we, um, had we ever done, uh, electronic meetings or been coming together using Zoom as meeting and how well did it turn out? And those were the only particulars, but if anyone is interested, I can shoot this through email so you can read it. But I think we should be very proud of this, the VSBA is going to support, the, the VSBA is going to support this and they, they will be lobbying this with the delegates, this assembly with this particular bill. And it's called the Twenty-First Century Communication for School Boards.
Thank you for that reminder and update. Mrs. Holtz?
Thank you. Um, on behalf of the Mayor's Committee for Disabilities, I'll repeat what I said last time because we're still accepting applications through the month of December for people who, in the community, who have helped, uh, other people with disabilities and have done some good. Uh, people here on the school board and anybody that might be listening now, I know you work with other groups, you work with your church groups sometimes, and there are a lot of unrecognized people who do really good things in the community and this is an opportunity for them. They have a Facebook page and it was posted there and we did get several applications, but I feel there are many hidden gems in the community that we really could honor. So look out, uh, for them. And the application is online, uh, and you can just submit it online or you can download it and send it off. They give an address on the website. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mrs. Hughes?
Uh, yes, tomorrow, the Building Utilization Committee is meeting from eleven to twelve-thirty. It'll be a Zoom meeting. Um, anyone can tune in to view it. We'll be discussing attendant zones, capacity, and kind of where we are with that. Um, so if you're interested in that, join us.
Thank you. And as far as government, so, uh, I, I will consult with the committee, uh, and the administration. Uh, going back to Mrs. Manning's question, we'll get that sorted out as far as the retreat timing and, and the meeting on, the school board meeting on the twenty-sixth. So look for further clarification of all that. Uh, is that it? Anybody else? Then that concludes our formal meeting, and Madam Clerk, it's my understanding we've had...